Do you have a memorial ornament?
I don't need a memorial ornament. They got their ornaments.
What did you do to the tree you were putting up? What did you do to the tree you were putting up?
I don't know. I put the tree up and then I put it up and then they take it down.
Let's call-
I put the tree up, they have to pluck it different. So my job is to get the tree out.
We're gonna have Bob Jones and people come back and put it up. Let's call this meeting to order. We got lots of- the minutes are reported, received and filed.
We have the reporters of November 2015 being filed, and the clerks 2015 being filed, and the sheriffs of November 2015 being up.
The liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got Board of Realtors, Political and Economic Responsibility Committee meeting tomorrow, Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night. See, we got meeting again Wednesday night. HPA Christmas party is Wednesday night. We also got invitations to that.
Yeah, yeah. I gotta work some. I'm pretty crazy when I gotta work.
So you got RPC meeting tomorrow at Columbia Research Airport. And who are- what's Center Fund's gonna be in here on Friday too?
Yeah, I gotta listen.
And what about KWS on Friday?
I did it last month. Do you- yeah, do you-
I can probably do it. I just didn't know, sometimes that changes what they cover on it.
Warren's been out of town. I think he's due back in tomorrow or Wednesday. I'll check with him.
Okay, just let me know Wednesday maybe. Christmas party Friday night.
Of course.
Letting know if you're gonna make it or not.
Probably have to work or something.
Oh.
Don't you have the windows or something?
No, we had a-
Don't you have to wash them this week? Everybody has their- their own.
No. We let the drunks throw the beer off of them.
I don't know where you're going with that.
Throw their beers, cigarettes out.
And we got Center Fund today on the road. CAP Region Board of Governors dinner tonight at 5:30. Tomorrow afternoon is the Central Banks governmental reception today. And then Wednesday morning before I come to our hearing, I've got CAP Region Medical Center's Executive Board at 7:30, so I will be here before nine.
I would love to come to all those events, but I basketball season, volleyball season, or cheer season and everything. I run from five to nine every night.
Yeah, it's a shame you can't do the parties for like two months or three months. Go November to January, just spread them out. There's a lot of fun stuff that we're invited to. It's just trying to-
Yeah, like you said, you gotta work too.
Yeah, somewhere in there. I gotta make a living. Okay. Accounts payable.
We're gonna put that up till next-
Okay. In-house budget discussion. Where do we want to start?
We'll just start in general fund, and we'll start with some of the smaller requests, or request for changes in the audit group budget. We can start with what I have for some of the listeners. Pringer Family Center. And Chris and you say if I don't catch all the changes they asked. But the only one I really had for him was professional services. And that's of course to pay for his attorney over there, and I think that was the only request. I had heard he wanted to do professional services back up to what he requested, at the $119,000, 240, instead of what the budget officer had of $115,000. And he, and Chris and I think agreed to that, but because the one attorney that did pro bono for them before is not doing it anymore. So-
What page is it?
Seventy-eight.
One fifty-two.
Something else we probably should look at while we're in here is food. I know he's done multiple transfers this year. We probably need to make sure that that number's correct.
So would you guys agree to move it up to 119,240? This is the question.
I mean, it's kind of a guess since point, since that attorney was doing pro bono-
On his professional services.
Yes.
I gave him $10,000 more than he had this year. He was thinking he needed more than that.
Are we gonna need somewhere else?
Well, I think he did a calculation. If you click it, it is no.
Can you- can you figure any difference between-
Over detail. The green button, on it in before the S.
Oh. There.
He put 356 hours a year, spent average of four hours a case on the United case that did the pro bono work. And that's how he came up with the additional amount that he put in there. 14,000, 240, that's-
So where are we at? So just a general question and not really picking on Michael here, but as we start to see all these transfers from this fund to this fund and everything else, I mean, kinda, why give them any more money to transfer out of it? Just come and ask for money out of contingency.
You could do that. I mean, might get some here without going all the way out. What are you looking for now? I mean, I can click on that, but that's just giving a long list of what we paid. I was just looking for the budget on transfers.
Well, you should keep current budget. You have a limited budget loaded, it should be what it is currently. So he has not transferred anything into professional services so far this year? That attorney just?
Yeah, I was saying-
Not.
That meant the food.
Well, right, but I guess where I'm going is that, you know, we have professional services. I'm saying, you know, they'll be transferring from professional services to food or whatever.
Right, true.
And that was my general question, is that the more we give them room in their budget, the more they can transfer versus coming and asking for additional money.
Correct. I really think the only two lines in Michael's budget that he's been transferring to is his communications and food. Those are really the only two lines that he's moved money to this year.
There's a couple of them.
Yeah.
And I guess it's more of a question is, transfer from one fund to the next versus transfer from contingency into something. I mean, other than having a court order-
I think in this circumstance, you're gonna have to increase this some. It's just we don't know what. I mean, I think that that pro bono work is going to affect us. It's just how much do you want to put in there now versus at what point do you want him to say, come back and show me that that's the reason why?
Page 28.
Seventy-eight.
Well, the problem that I have with juvenile services, if I can get to this page here, is it's a necessary function, but it's a cost of $1.2 million to the county. It's, I mean, that's what we're putting into juvenile.
I think- Probably, I mean, we just sent around and emailed other auditors and what they were paying in attorney fees. We're paying fairly small amount at $20 an hour. It could be a lot more.
Yeah, that's- I don't disagree with that. I mean, I just, as a function of government, how much can we afford to spend on juvenile services? I mean, that's a chunk of money.
Well, and I would say the bulk of his budget is personnel. It's not necessarily, it's running 24/7 and having somebody there all the time. I don't think that the other costs in his department are really extravagant.
And as far as what it looks like for what was in the budget for 2016, the county is putting $1.2 million of juvenile operations. I mean, they bring in about $700,000, cost us about $2 million.
And if you look at the bottom line there though, his amended budget currently to what we're going to fund in '16 is only, probably $500 more in '16 versus '15 in part of his amended budget to start the bar.
Right.
So, I mean, we're not seeing a huge increase from '15 budget to '16 budget as far as what the county is letting.
But he's over on food already.
Uh, he, yes, he transferred to food already. So the number in the book is prior to those transfers. So originally his food was 43, and now it's 48. But he has kept those transfers within his current budget, so he hasn't changed that bottom dollar. If you were pulling from contingency into his budget, you would be increasing the bottom dollar.
So I mean, so if we gave him 48 in food, are we gonna deduct what he pulled out of all his transfers from all these others? Yeah, that's-
Well, I'm not exactly sure. I know that one of the transfers that he did was out of a grant that they no longer have. That was the first transfer. So that grant went away anyway. He's not gonna be able to pull from there in the future. That's the one that he's not-
But that was revenue, so that's kind of a double whammy almost.
Right.
I was thinking he's had larger number of students, finance, whatever.
Right, so his revenue for the food, if you look at child nutrition, is up also. So some of that is being reimbursed. It's just not the total. I mean, you're seeing reimbursement for about $17,000. Well, right now he's at projected 22. So of that 48, he gets almost half.
Well, he's gonna be at that 48 plus this $2,000. So he's gonna be at $50,000 for the year. And so then the 43 that we started with, so when I get this transfer, it'll be at even $50,000. And what was the budget?
Uh, the child nutrition. He wants number 48, 74.
What's going on there? Grab this card.
Let's scroll back.
Hey, go right down.
More 8, 7, 4?
One fifty-two.
Child nutrition.
Yeah, I want that guy. Trying to reload it.
So let's see, one, all of them.
I've had better luck to you than all funds. All funds at Department 152.
What on task? Budget. 152, right? Okay.
The fives. Fives, sorry. Go down these numbers.
Me on the left is the expense.
I got these keys. But, yeah. So where are we having, Governor?
I thought it was just a copy and a save. A lot of them in now.
So where are we at on, as we move forward and we get this? All the all systems, security up and going. I thought we were gonna be saving about $1,000. Surely that would be coming some out of his expense line too. But I'm right?
So his equipment service contract should be going down. We didn't have a good idea. I mean, we took it down to 12 versus 18. But his had some additional security features that I don't think are included in the access control. So we're scared to bump that down too far until we know for sure what we're getting.
So that they have to do, do front end or it's gonna be very short on?
And they have a different security system off of rather you've got- Gotta keep people from breaking out of people.
I think there's a, if you look at the, uh, if you look at his, I think he did mention- So we put $6,000 per family in there. It's kind of our best guess and comment.
Copy machine and all arms. Her feet cut, he didn't spend anything. I mean, we can leave it professional services where it is. Again, Chris did increase it, and then just let him come back if he needs it towards the end of the year. Definitely actually does. Food though, I don't know. Again, that's totally based on how many kids are there. A lot of, or do you wanna wait on that one too? Since we're already up to 50 and she has it at 48?
48.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think that's-
I'd be more up to leave it at 43. Just because he could, as he's up, kids this year, he could be down. So that's, that's just me. So, I mean, I'm-
Well, that's my firefly. So if we have to put more in, we can pull it out of contingency. We don't have to do a court order or anything.
True.
We have more control over this one than other ones. Also put it in other people's budgets. Now we control. I'm fine with it.
Same 45?
I think I're at 50 already. I'd be more inclined to go to 48. I don't think cost of food's gonna go down any next year.
Well, if you, if you look at his 14 activity, he was at 45. So the 43 may have been a little low to get go.
But I know we've done two. We've done, like, we've done two foods.
Yeah, but we also know that we got some people that are eating over there as well. The more money you put in there, the more people are gonna be eating. Next thing, I'll be safe.
It doesn't matter. Either way, I mean, 43 is what he's requesting. 48 makes a little bit more sense. Because basically that's what we're spending, we're spending over that this year, but I-
43 against 48, so. Cut her in the middle. Sorry. Sorry to lay it on-
I thought you were picking an easy one.
I thought, I thought.
It's gonna be a long day.
It's gonna be a long day.
Honestly, we'll flip a quarter. We've got control over some. If you start seeing state come in through their, his expenses, we can go ring some necks.
He says it's peanut butter. He said they eat a lot of peanut butter.
I'm fine with 48. Let's leave it at that. So we don't have to change it then. Then we'll keep an eye on them expenditures. I know we talk about it every year.
How about professional services? 115 is up from where it was this year? And see how it goes? Or would you want to put it to the 119 and I hold for that?
If we use his numbers, I will use the fee that we think it's gonna be.
Well, that would be the 119 as far as what he's, but we're at 115 now, so.
Like I said, I'm different with this one because we got a lot more control over this fund.
I mean, it's an estimate either way. I mean, the 105 has been working. It, he's stayed within it pretty much. So the difference is that attorney that's no longer doing the pro bono work. So it's an estimate either way. My estimate was $1,000, his was 14, 240. I mean, it's up to you guys where you wanna go. I think you're definitely gonna see an increase in costs there.
Yeah. I'm okay with the 119, 240.
I'm at 115.
I should start. See if you have top first.
I already said-
It would be at the end.
I already said- I've been at 105.
What you said at the end.
I said what they figured if that was the hours up there this year, and then that could be the 119, 240. And once again, on the same premise that we have more control over this fund.
Right, runs. All right, we're gonna stay in general fund.
He starts trying to transfer out of that to put it in, I don't know, cell phone or something else.
128 is 53.
How we going back?
Who is this going with?
Let's go to the department.
Yes.
128.
128.
Eight, 53.
What we did the other day.
Oh, I'm sorry, you see that low data up here? See that low data?
Oh.
Chris can show you that trick.
And then what were you going to?
He wanted professional services. The only thing I had online was he would like professional services back up to the $25,000.
The Dale?
Yes. He obviously has expenses, and, but he just, he doesn't know when he's gonna need rich. And he also doesn't know how much the recorder of Dean kind of has the open ended thing there with rich to, if he'll pay for at his budget. He has like $18,000 based on basically what he's used. And actually, it's probably-
So right now he's at $8,618. Even if you doubled that, we'd still be at 18. But-
I think mine doesn't show up to professional services.
Yeah.
I think that's due to, you need to change here.
Yeah, mine doesn't either.
So we go to budget template. Debbie just waited a minute. I'm gonna hit a new one.
I just hit what you told me.
Okay. So go in here and hit budget approval level. And in the 16 budget officer. And go back to that again. And commission approved.
Ah, crap.
I thought when I did mine, it did it for everybody.
Well, did you create? Yeah. Change the-
Change the degree.
Commission budget.
Commission budget.
No, hit okay.
Okay. There we go. All right, go to the budget template.
Budget template. And then change it from default.
So then we can look at the one that Debbie's looking at. Cool.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
And then click okay.
I thought everybody was, thanks, so it's by user.
You have to, yeah, you have to pick which one you want.
Okay, much better.
By loser?
I thought this whole time, you guys were saying the same thing.
Wow, we can't be all into the book.
So, I got the paper.
You guys just said duck, call it nutter.
Yeah, obviously.
I'm more confused than I was listening to Obama.
Did I too?
I did for a big, because I was getting tips. I was like, are you gonna cut into my football game?
Dale was 25.
Yes. And he's at 18. Obviously, I only spent about $9,000 so far, so I don't think it's unreasonable. He reported him at 16 for the year. 16, 384.
Yeah, 39 in the budget for this year though.
I don't remember why we had so much.
We had so much before because we had Mark Freeman and Dave Sabbath in the past. And we never knew exactly when to take theirs out. So previously, it was a lot higher. But both of those professional services costs have gone away. Dave Sabbath doesn't, he is coming out of the accessories budget, not out of Dale.
And Dale's very concerned with, so he doesn't like-
Yeah, Dale, Dale's-
Rich. Sometimes I think he should.
Dale saves, he saves us a lot.
So as I, as I see this, and I look at 267 and 15, now we're at 228. Our revenue's going down. If our admin fee and reimbursement's going down, but our expenses look like they're staying pretty steady.
Oh, down the bottom line?
Yeah. And of course, that's due to the study that says that-
So admin fee is based on the maximum of the study. When they go through and figure out their cost.
Just the first stuff about, it's a different department. So that's, I'd add, I'd add the maximum study to it where it shows.
And he actually does, well, general fund does take Senate admin fee for Dale out of the law enforcement fund. It's just we take it a different way, does not take back the same ways the other funds are.
Take it out of the transfer that we sent to them. We could stop them later. There was a debate about he would not, he was not paying it to us, so. There was a debate about that. So that's why we just took it out of the transfer.
Took it out of the $2 million?
Yes. That was when the lawsuit and everything was going on.
But it doesn't come back in the-
It doesn't show up in here because it's not coming from the law enforcement back. It's coming out of that before it goes.
So it's up to you if you wanna put that back to the 25 or you-
I'm good with 25. Dale, Dale has it and he won't spend it.
No. I'm good with that too.
Yeah, I got two, so we got it.
Move on with the, we got control of this one too.
We're not working on salaries and anything at this point right now.
I will skip the ones that I just wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I tried to argue this one, and then would make my other arguments move on Pringer Center.
Um, let's just go to 131.
I shouldn't stop you.
Department 131, page 55.
Okay, y'all try to keep this moving, are you?
We're trying.
131, 55.
This is building maintenance. The only thing I did hear Greg say is he would like the equipment, equipment service contract to be increased by that generator maintenance that we added to it by $3,000. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are okay with that. See where he's at. So that should be $17,000, so. I guess it's the best place to put it.
So we're taking that to what?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Which one was that yet?
Equipment service contract. It was at $17,000.
Okay, I see all that. I was looking for stuff while you were talking about it, saw it in here.
So basically, I'm moving to, it's identified as $3,000. Put in there as generator maintenance.
Okay. I missed that word. Heard some kind of maintenance, I didn't get to. Go ahead. Which one are we going to?
Well, we can go to 153, which is John Riley.
Page 70.
And he talked about wanting, he would like his equipment service contract to go up to $2,289 for his three court reporters and annual maintenance, and $525.
No, Bill did those.
And he said he had figured that wrong when he was-
I thought that I didn't know, but I did.
Yeah, I was like you.
He had misfigured.
Well, the problem was what he had in there too. Why he might, because he's transferred some money out of this line. It's because I didn't, I hadn't paid sonar toll bill for the last quarter. Because I'm holding off on paying sonar- It's because I even, I hadn't paid sonar control bill for the last quarter because I'm holding off on paying sonar control.
We're missing a quarter somewhere.
So I just submitted all those quarterly bills, so the money he transferred out of here, I'm going to have to transfer back to him. I should realize that when he wanted to transfer out. Too late now.
Did he get us a list for the meetings, travels and dues what they were wanting to try to sign up for this year?
No, he did want that, so he brought that up to eight thousand eight hundred.
And I'm not going to get to pay for any of it, so. It's a state function and states should pay for it.
I don't know legal.
Well, I guess my question is on some of the court reporter costs, I mean, you see in the budget run for even this week, there's three or four different bills from the court reporters for transcripts that the prosecutor has to pay for the transcript. But we pay for the maintenance on their machines, we pay for their training, we pay for the, I mean, multiple costs for them, yet we get charged whenever they use it to create a transcript for us.
Who owns the machine?
At one point they bought their own, but through the years it's become we bought, we buy them for them. But when she says that we have to pay for that transcript, she's saying we pay those girls personally for their time they give the transcripts.
So they're using our transcriber?
Yes.
The machine?
Now, I don't, I don't know that for sure. I'm assuming that the original transcription was done on the machine. Now, whether or not they have something at home that they use to actually take what they view in the courtroom and actually make it a document, I don't know. I don't know the process. But the original transcription, yes, would have been done in the courtroom on our machine.
And when the prosecutor needs a copy of it or a case or something, then they are paid for that.
So that transcription machine sits over there for, I guess the transcriptionist, they're being paid by the state or are they private? Because y'all said they go home and they have some other machine.
I, I've never understood that. I don't know if there are a pool of them and they kind of, they get told to go somewhere, so I don't know if it's through state court or if it's.
Yeah, I don't know where the actual appointment is.
They're not actually employed by the state, that's where I was going, they're not.
I think that they are.
I thought they were. They're not employed by house by them. I thought they got.
I think they're private.
And the old days, when Pat Rowe, when Pat Rowe had her office upstairs above my.
I think when they're.
I get what you're saying though, is we're being charged for them to do something on our machine and.
Well, and yeah, and we're paying for them to travel to go to training and things like that.
How do we look into this? I'm like Chris, I, it's kind of.
That, that's actually is very.
Legally, what?
Very vague. We have to provide them with the, the space and the means to operate the court. Now, that's a very vague and very broad description of what the county requires to pay for.
Somewhere does it say we're supposed to pay for them to go to conferences in New Orleans and?
Well, and that's just it. I mean, we have restricted most of our county employees to not go to national conferences. Most of them do not. Most, most do not travel out of state, period.
We've come down on the trinket trips.
So I, I mean, there are one department where we don't have any control over that travel other than to restrict their budget amount.
This one right here was the biggest thing that was spent out of there this year out of the six thousand, there was a seventeen hundred dollar trip. And that was the Vegas.
You look to come judges again. And let's go up to Vegas on a fact finding.
I'm thinking. I'm thinking if Naco is in Hawaii or Florida or Vegas, you know, New Orleans, maybe we can go.
Hello, judge!
We're talking about you.
I don't know.
Oh, that's going to be very boring.
Hey, are your court reporters the ones that do the transcribing or what is it called?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Are those private firms?
No, well, they're all state, they all work for.
They're paid by the state?
Yes.
And they have their retirement and everything's through the state?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, back in nineteen seventy eight, you all, the county used to pay for all the court county judges and clerks and court.
Oh, as employees of the county?
As employees of the county back. And then they switched, shifted it over and the arrangement with the counties was they would provide, you know.
Well, it used to, the state wasn't nickel and dime in the counties for every little thing too. Now they're going to want us to provide inspections for nursing homes too, they want to dump that on the county, so.
Well, you know, there's a lawsuit, yeah.
So they, they keep.
But the court, that's when the court changed, that's when the money changed.
Well, we want it to change back.
You all, you all want to take, you want to take the two million dollars?
We want all the fees too.
What about that meeting travels and dues, which one?
We, we had control out of how the deal came out.
What all meetings and travels and dues, what kind of trips are they going to go on?
Well, they go to, they go to an annual trip, a couple of them do go to an annual trip. I think mostly they're in the state of Missouri.
I don't think we have as big a deal with them being in Missouri in some of these conferences because we got some of them we have to go to too.
Yeah, I mean, I think most of them are in the.
I don't know how much value's in some of them, we have the mandatory training that I.
Well, they have mandatory, well, the one thing about court reporters is they get, you know, most of them are on real time and so they have to do an update to do the real time.
Their C D and stuff or?
Yeah, they have to get it, but real time looks a lot different. And, you know, when, when I'm talking, I can look at my screen and see what exactly is being said in the courtroom. So it makes your objections even clearer. So that's, it's kind of like, you know, if you're watching TV, you'll see simultaneous, so it's.
When they do a transcript, is for the court record and if the prosecutor actually wants a copy of that transcript, is it the same one or do they have to recreate another one?
Well, the ones that we see are not edited. And they're not phonetic either. They'll have phonetics like, a word will come up and it'll show type out full word or something, so they have to edit it.
They have to edit it for what the prosecutor would want.
Well, for what anyone would want. I mean, the Court of Appeals, when they review it, they're looking at like it's a story. You know, it's correctly, it's edited, the punctuation, they don't put that punctuation in. Yeah, and they also, words will show up like tree will come up something. And sometimes when I'm looking at it, it becomes very strange.
So if somebody said three, they may type in tree, but you know they meant three, but whenever they did the transcription, they should type out.
They have, yeah, they actually type out every word.
So when we get one for the prosecutors and we're providing machines and stuff, we get charged for that, where does that money go?
That goes to the court reporter.
So then what do they pay us to use our machines?
I think we pay the machines. Well, we, would they have, we have to, you have to have court reporter for every circuit court, circuit judge, so.
I know, sometimes you guys pay for their machines sometime, I don't know, it's been years ago that we paid my lawyer.
Yeah.
Currently the three machines on are.
Yeah, but I don't think you all pay for it.
State bought it, but we have our stickers on them.
It probably came out of the court judge. That, that's the arrangement with all the money.
We're just going to put a sticker on the judges, right?
I'm here, so we don't, anybody that comes out of our interest accounts or the other one is they, we've agreed that they can put their sticker on it, so we don't have to keep a separate inventory.
So would that be something that could come out of interest accounts, are these meetings and trinket chirps and stuff?
No, those can't. They can't, I mean, we, you know, we pick up.
All there's going to always be arguments about who should pick up more.
Why don't you help us with our windows?
Chill the windows, I know they're going to be asking for more for something else.
I don't know about, well, when you all are got, we, we used to have more interest money coming in, but that stopped, that's all.
Cry the basement or something while they're building themselves?
No, I don't know what happened with it. No, it went back to people, I, I never got, I never had any money to get you all, but we have through years. What we have.
Thank you, guys.
Alright.
Danielle better come over coffee.
I would much rather be able to answer your questions than you all speculate and think.
I figured that's why he was over, he was listening to it, so don't.
No, 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 I just came over to, no, 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 I didn't do it. Well, I hope you guys have a nice, I'm going to try to get to the county Christmas party, but I got a jury truck on my day.
Donnie, I want a bracelet trinket too.
A what?
What? Didn't you, didn't you get some doll pendants or something?
Yeah, my boy.
Yeah.
Start talking about it.
It's my wife's birthday, man.
Yeah, and she didn't like that one, so they went and get another one. She was changing it because she couldn't wear the silver or something, so. I was just laughing, I don't know, it's a funny story. Then you bought two other ones or something?
Well, she bought another one.
And probably a ring and necklace.
Earrings, let's call for earrings.
If she wants something shiny, I'm just name a star after her.
So did we decide on that? No, I want to go back. Meetings and travel, you want to set it, leave it at six?
I want to zero it, but I don't know, we can't zero it.
Alright, now.
We asked for a, you know, a list and I never got anything, so I guess we'll just go six.
What about equipment service contract? It's at sixteen five. He has transferred money out of there, again, I might have to transfer money back in, but, you know, really, I think that's enough because what was in there was sonar control. And we're not going to have that expense coming out of there going forward with the new system. So, but it's up to you.
We're sure you was making that draw out of it, or are you saying that?
It's family security.
Yeah, I don't view it.
Come the drug court enhancement is going away now.
It's a multi-year grant, so he gets to carry forward whatever he hasn't spent. I think it's a three-year grant cycle. So you get the whole amount upfront in our budget and then you just carry forward the amount as you split it down.
So when there's a hundred and eighty thousand in fifteen, that doesn't mean that he spent all that fifteen?
No, so the difference would be the one eighty to the ninety seven.
I see.
So what's your planning on that?
So the twenty, so you have, he hasn't been paying.
No, sorry.
How much did he transfer out?
I don't think he transferred out though.
Didn't we transfer some from Jersey?
Yeah, I think he transferred into there, was that transfer we signed last?
Transferred into.
Equipment service.
I thought I signed.
Yeah, it was a transfer in, not a transfer out.
Can't see that from here.
You could load the adopted budget, then you could see the difference between adopted and amended, but right now it's amended level.
Amended is actual?
Amended is whatever it is right now, so including any transfers done so far this year.
So if there's not any more expenses for that, we're here, he's at twenty five eighty eight for this year?
That's with that transfer in.
Goodness.
And here's what his activity at fourteen?
Yeah, I see the sixteen thirty for fourteen. So we jumped it probably up to two thousand last year even.
In twenty fourteen, I don't think he paid the maintenance on all three of the court reporters' machines. I think there was only one in there and he's saying this year he needed to pay the other two, that five seventy nine. It's now five eighty eight, but there should have been three of those there. And there was only one, this year he goes to this year's activity.
See amended budget show the transfers.
They're included in that total.
That's what's actually been paid out.
So what was actual budget?
How do we look at that?
They'll go, go up to your budget. And just add, but there's an original budget on the middle. There also, I'll come ahead and add original budget.
We all have to do that?
No, it should change when she changes the template. It's named.
I might have to save it to. Ooh, now it says override, you just do budget template, backup, cancel, cancel. Pull out, okay.
Did your guy just change something? Oh, you should have probably moved it over. Go up back to the budget template.
Chris.
I didn't realize what to say.
Yeah, I did, soon as I.
Bringing arrows to the top.
Oh goodness.
Maybe you go off and come back in, do you want to see it?
Yeah, it's at the very back of it now, so.
Oh, because you didn't save it, go back into budget. Oh, it just was saved.
I'm going to go back here to go to commission budget and click on that again. Okay.
Did it go? I think you have to get out and go back in, it should change the template.
No, we're going to do that.
Yeah.
That one's closed.
Yeah. Closed, we did enter the budget.
Oh, we are.
He looks so fully confused.
There we go. Now, we're going to start entering, I'll go back to the look.
So, okay, originally two thousand, we're up to two thousand five eighty eight. Activity's at two, he's one to two thousand two eighty nine, and we're at sixteen five.
The sixteen five was before, quite, go back to his current activity. But he had not paid either of those two five eighty eight, so when we submitted the budget, so he had only spent eight hundred and twenty four dollars when we were looking at the budget. So we went back to the prior years and see where he was at, that's how we got to the sixteen fifty.
I guess two thousand is not at a reach since that's where we're at this year, but that's up to you then.
We stayed within budget, paid it this year, just pulled it from somewhere else, so.
At the two thousand.
Right.
But he also pulled it from your script, you know, what encouraged that going forward?
Yeah. I don't want to keep that up.
But how is that any different than pulling transfers from any other line item?
Well, I think that's a big one that you guys should control. I don't, I think, it's kind of like election.
Let's take it out, take it out of this budget completely.
I don't know what happened.
And that's the only way you can control it?
But we want to keep it in that to keep track of it as part of the actual cost of that department. So as long as you guys just don't allow the transfers to happen, then, then you're good. It's kind of like elections, elections, you know, for some reason they don't have an election, we just do not want the transfer, that money is something else to suspend.
I'm okay with leaving it at two thousand.
Two thousand?
That's fine, yeah. You don't always. Come back to it.
Well, he wanted to go in and put those notes of what he had, but we needed. Well, he wanted to go in and put those notes of what he had, but we need to... What's the five eighty-eight?
What does jury script stand for? I mean, it's just paying jury, right?
Right.
And for jury, for food and stuff, for juries and stuff?
Yeah, it's all of the costs related to the jury, so they get the twelve dollars a day for the days that they serve, and then, uh, any food they bring in, or the main food cost.
What did he spend on five thousand?
Then he had a hundred and seventy-five.
Okay. And what was that?
I thought that was something for them also, but I'm not exactly sure.
You're gonna be thinking about your football all day.
Okay.
Two thousand?
Quite what he said.
I love my mother, she loves marriage.
Oh, yeah, we go to Urban out there.
Okay, when is this?
Wednesday night.
We do that Wednesday.
Wednesday night.
We can talk about part-time and overtime at one twenty-three. I mean, that's not perfect, but I... And that's the time for it?
One twenty-one.
So, one twenty-three?
Sorry, one twenty-one. The, uh, question about the part-time and the overtime. Part-time be at, yeah, number ten.
He prefers...
Kristen put him in there at four, so... I think you guys kinda agreed that wait and see, and I just wanted to bring it back up. Same with the overtime, he asked for eight, and it's in there at three. So, we can wait and see.
We got a question. I've got this intrusion provision module contract renewal that we've been out of for over a month, and it just came in. Can we do that, or do we get to put it off?
Can we put it on Wednesday, so that...
There's two more days without it, I mean...
We have to.
Yeah, we have to, wait until Wednesday. Okay.
But we need to... I will need to get it put on the agenda.
Did you, did any of us?
Yeah.
I'm gonna believe it's same, it's all due for election services, basically, right?
Right.
Right, so, his part-time would be if he had the initiative petition that they have to verify signature, and his overtime is for the girls that reached their max in comp time because of so many elections, and normally, there's only two of them, and they don't use it very often. So, I mean, he could always come back if it's in order or not, and stay in the restaurant, but I don't see them using more than three thousand.
We didn't have any overtime in his two thousand fifteen budget.
No, it's usually during the presidential year, every four years. Um, so we'll just leave it the same and come back.
Do you have any other things?
Uh, the, because he has, he has election services funds, but he can't really use that for... They had used it in the past for a memory animal understanding, so we didn't weigh with that, so I would rather not. Get it done, yeah, especially with personnel.
And you did take the postal campus account and the maintenance on the voting machine?
Yeah, I was gonna tell you that in election services, we did pay for that coastal campus, so I took that out, ten thousand six hundred. So, we're down to three hundred fifty-three thousand in elections, and then in equipment service maintenance, he also said that we, since we bought all those in equipment this year, these three would not be in, but that would pay more, more pay for those, that equipment, so the only thing in is the coppers, so that line out.
Equipment and service contract.
Went down to five.
So, the first year's included with the new equipment.
So, it's down to what?
Five hundred.
And then, of course, we always talk about these grants and stuff that he has, so, once we get the, those purchases paid for, these line items may change depending on the end of the year, what we said, and that's true for a lot of accounts. So, I just wanted that you guys know that some will change. We can go to Bill Farr, I mean, that's it, in case you guys have any questions. So, we can go to one sixty-seven?
Ninety.
Well, Bill had, um, what would you go down to meetings of travel? He'd like to have his meetings of travel back at three thousand. You're down at twenty-five hundred, uh, as a, he was budgeted for three before. I'm sure Kristen based it on what he's actually spent. We have two more budget lines, so I don't know what to do. So, if you'd like to leave it at twenty-five hundred, or if you'd like to put it down to three thousand, let me know. Which we'll spend it on, you know, of course, some of the year was just transferred over, and then we get more detail. So, next year would be really nice, when it'll be a lot more detailed, so, sorry, the whole year will be in detail.
So, what was it spent on?
Um, different things here, I, I think a lot of it's meetings he has with all the volunteers, so, um, it's a good thing that we, like, paid for their lunch. I think three of those guys went to something in October.
Yeah, we spent, yeah, we, yeah.
And also, it's just food.
They went to that out-of-state training, and then they went to training in Sebelia. But to my, my recollection, they haven't done a whole lot of that in the past, this was kinda just this year.
Right.
With that out-of-state and that one in Sebelia.
The other, the other thing that makes his meetings of travel's kind of fluctuated, is they have something like a Joplin, or something where they're taking car trucks somewhere, it can have an effect on their line. Of course, there hasn't been anything large this year that they've taken those trucks to, but that is where some of the fluctuation in his budget comes from, and to me, those are kind of emergency situations where he could go back and say, you know, hey, we need to take the truck here for this, or we've been called out for this, and at that point, I think he could put more money in, or that.
But in those instances, wouldn't we be able to get reimbursement for some of that, too?
Um, sometimes, yes, yes.
And he had come, come to us and asked about sending those ones down south, truck and everything, so...
And he, he does get, you know, pre-forc'd, and most of his travel expense is reimbursed, fifty percent from the bed, twenty-five percent from the city, so, whatever you put in there, and he spends, most of that does get reimbursed to us, so it's not a...
And here we go, two thousand fourteen, he actually did spend twenty-seven six, sixty-three, so I'm not sure.
Where does that money come back in, Kristen?
Uh, that, well, there's two lines, the FEMA FEMA grant at the top, four eight two one two is the federal portion, and then the emergency management city, four six seven one eight is the city's portion. He did say that that could reduce this year because that part-timer isn't in there anymore, but...
Can I get on Christian meeting Wednesday, talk about a pole pole box? Just poles on?
Chris?
Chris, that okay?
So, um, do we leave it at twenty-five, or...
I don't remember, jury, and then?
No, that was the one, that, oh, that's the machine, this is the pole box.
Oh. You have another question?
We were trying to figure out pole box versus the machine.
The pole box, the computers. We just need to dispose of them.
Just wanna get some Tannerite, and go out to public works and do this?
It's for the hard drive, huh?
I'm sure the ladies would like to do that with the voting machines.
Yeah.
Marla wants to beat one with a bat.
Give her a one, give her turf for Christmas.
That'd be a good Christmas present for her, she wants to buy one back for her.
But it's Christmas party.
Alright, what do you think, meetings and travel for Bill? Leave it, what, Christian has, or new goods, or...
Five hundred dollars either way.
Oh, sure it does, damn. Five hundred dollars you can give to someone else.
Yep, for ya, twenty-five hundred, three thousand, seven hundred. And on that, um, he also wanted a mileage. Twenty-five hundred, oh, uh... Yeah, mileage, he wanted five three hundred fifty.
He doesn't have a mileage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some like, um, no, that's the only one.
Uh, he wanted office supplies back up to fourteen hundred, and he also wanted his emergency back up to six thousand. So, like, we can all those at the same time, office supplies, I think, again, he's only at eight forty, but there is, um, the last quarter yet to go out, I'm not sure how much he actually spends. Here, probably not that much. Uh, second quarter, only thirteen dollars.
Alright, office supplies to fourteen hundred, and you want what?
Um, emergency fund, the emergency account, back up to six thousand. Again, that was kind of just an account he uses in case there is one, he's never really had it that high.
I think I have a note here that that was for, um...
Oh, he wants those tables, you know?
Yeah, I took the tables out, and went to the sales staff, that's what was included in there. So, I, I took that four thousand out for tables.
Oh, and he wanted the two thousand for the batteries for the sirens.
Okay, 'cause I had notes on here.
Give it the two thousand. Office supply that I keep at eleven hundred.
Okay, well, then that makes it, that's two thousand.
Okay, takes me, travels to three thousand.
So, plus the five hundred dollars?
I'm, I'm just wanting, so...
I'll find out the three thousand.
I'm just finding three thousand, too.
What about office supply? He got eleven hundred, he's going to fourteen hundred. He don't spend eight forty-one.
No, I...
I didn't have a note that he has, but he was like that. Wasn't a thousand this year, he didn't drop to a thousand yet?
I just think that's low.
Alright, you guys, call that one good.
Eleven or a thousand?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred.
Two thousand fifteen, he was at a thousand. Jumped up another hundred dollars.
Projected, yeah. So, if he projected me a thousand eighty, so one thousand one hundred should work good for two thousand sixteen.
Alright.
Okay, now, I think we'll save the question of a part-timer versus a pole fun for the end.
What's your emergency?
Leave it up to, 'cause the other four thousand was right on the table, and we'll talk about that.
Why did he go up to two from a thousand in fifteen?
He has money in there just for replacement of the batteries for the sirens.
How many sirens we got? Thirteen or something?
I'd like to actually do another siren, I think.
I think he was talking about eighty dollars a battery, but he didn't expect them all to need to be replaced at the same time.
He got four batteries per unit is what he said, so that's three twenty per unit, and... I don't remember how many sirens he had.
I don't remember that much.
Some of them are inside the city limits and stuff, too, some are in Wardsville and...
But in our agreement, if I remember the agreement, we pay.
Was it in Centertown, didn't it? Where, where, town shifts it?
How long they could afford it? Wardsville added one. They got two, three.
We have fourteen of them that we've on at a value of twenty-five thousand.
How many?
Fourteen.
That's not including the ones inside of incorporated areas?
Yes, I think we bought them. We bought them all, and then they paid us, but, no, these are, I'm thinking I'm insuring all of them. This is insurance.
There's fourteen that are not, 'cause we paid the city for the ones that...
We bought one in Wardsville, they bought an extra one. Yeah, because we weren't giving them, we're just gonna give them one.
Right, but I, I think the fourteen doesn't include that extra one. I mean, I could be wrong, I'll have to come back.
Emergency, to me, is for an emergency, where he has some cash incident. I don't know why we'd be buying those batteries out of emergency.
Well, we can make it to the equipment service contract.
Or out of capital or something, yeah.
Well, I guess that's the other question, is if you would have to replace those batteries, would you pay for it out of sales tax, or would you pay for it out of general, out of his budget?
Yeah, I, I don't think. Capital, I mean, what's the life of those batteries?
It's been three years now.
We have three years.
Capital should be about five, maybe.
I'm not a big fan of sirens anyway, so I don't even talk about them.
Emergency is kind of a misnomer.
I would think, I, you know, when you think of emergency, you think of, of some kind of a disaster.
Yeah, something, something where he needs to cash.
Well, the same thing, you know, going to Joplin or something, it gives them...
Yeah, to me, that's the emergency, but...
I mean, I, to me, the battery should, should be a discussion that we have, and, and that's a, not really a capital expense, it's more of a maintenance expense, but...
I mean, I think...
But then, do you wanna leave two thousand in emergency, just for...
Well, there again, you know, we have control over that, Bill starts spending it like it's not supposed to, I mean, we're gonna have to have a discussion there, but... I don't, Bill's not gonna do that.
No, it feels like Dale, too, I think we're, we're fortunate.
But, I mean, if he needs...
Forty, that's it.
The batteries, and I think we oughta get them on a rotation, so we don't have to replace them all at the same time. It would replace them this year, and hopefully, some of last until next year.
Is the last expense about to reach?
I don't, I don't know, that's the thing, is we bought them all at one time, so if we can get them on a rotation...
And I don't think he thought that they would all need to be replaced, he just said there's the possibility that they're three-year old, that they could stop going out.
Well, we have a guy who looks at those, like, twice a year or something.
I think, yeah, they are, they're internal.
I'm just gonna make a note, tell him before he does anything with the, um, talk to me before you purchase any batteries for the sirens, so then we can decide at that point whether you want capital, or if you want to put that money in, or if we wanna move that money out, or put it in service, whichever. Would you wanna leave that two thousand there for other emergency, or bring it back down to the thousand? Which we traditionally have to do.
I think we leave it at two thousand, as we, that's just me, I, with the stuff that he's got, and, uh... He always spends the stuff out of something else, but I mean, if you ever, what's his, retired or something, maybe, maybe that, that's pretty class.
Okay, well, I'll just leave that in there then. And we're gonna go to one fifty-one. Hello?
I did that before.
We can, we can take them. One fifty-one, page six to eight.
Okay, where, where are we at?
Uh, one fifty-one, department. Sorry.
It's like a clerk, what she asked for.
She's wanting quite a few changes.
We need the travel, violation, office supply.
She wants four hundred more in equipment service contract, five hundred more in meetings of travel, fifty dollars more in mileage, and three thousand dollars more in office supply. She wants four hundred more in equipment service contract, five hundred more in means travel, fifty dollars more in mileage, and three thousand dollars more in office supply.
We got four.
Okay, with all of the office supply.
For the service, she wanted that to go to thirteen thousand. She's at ten-three, projected to be at eleven-five. No real detail of what that's used for. Awesome.
But she said she had a bunch more coming in or something?
Well, currently, she's got like her copy machine, um, G D, the leafs, uh, microfilming maintenance, and maintenance of off-site storage, that's the top cabinet itself out there.
So, her four hundred dollars more in equipment service, she was saying that she thought my overages amount was too small. But that's an average of what she's been paying monthly all year. I mean, I didn't take what compared to another, so... The eighteen hundred in overages wasn't average, you know, this year. She thinks it should be four hundred or more than that.
So, thirteen thousand?
She gets, she wants thirteen thousand.
And what?
Uh, equipment service contract.
I'm okay with that. Okay, Sam?
Yeah, I don't care.
So, adding the four hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What else?
Meeting of travel, she wanted twenty-one or it says two thousand. It was two thousand and fifty.
She hasn't spent any of that?
Yeah.
No, I'd see that up.
Um, okay, uh, mileage, she wanted, that's be three hundred fifty instead of three hundred, she's at two sixty-eight, and she says the one that's traveling back, which is probably, you have one to that.
Okay, well, yeah, I don't give a fifty bucks.
The last one to office supply, she went in through thousand. She's not there, though.
At nineteen, she's got one more big order to go, and her courleys are about two thousand, um, twenty-five to three thousand.
So, even if you added four thousand to her nine, you're still at thirteen.
Yeah.
That's thirteen on the office supply.
Chris's tree is a...
We're gonna check them out.
They're all better now. I don't get stressed about that earlier.
Sam, are you okay with thirteen thousand?
I am okay with thirteen thousand, yeah.
That two of them, okay.
What's, yes.
So, did you change?
What did we do on meetings and travel?
The one for thirteen, oh, um, meetings and travel?
Left it at two. We went fifty dollars more in mileage and more in equipment.
A little bit of coffee there, somebody else talked in their home. Just never know.
How about swish ice tea, shortly?
I just, it wasn't mentioned before, but two years ago, um, we supplied the court, circuit court with a part-time, um, employee to keep track and to hopefully do some scanning if they're not in a car. Nothing was ever mentioned, but it's still in there, so I just want you to be aware of that the part-timer's still there, not always, um...
If they're scanning stuff, I will be fine with it because I would love to get as much paper out of the full bank and have as much scanned as possible. But if it's microfishing, it drives me nuts.
I just want you to be aware that the part-timer's still in there.
Are we doing an annual memo on that, or are we just redoing the memo we did?
I think we put a capital on it.
I thought it was just a one year, we renewed it every year, but I don't know if we've done a new contract, which is continued to renew it or...
I don't think we're going back on that. Okay. And I don't know, we'll just keep, I don't know, right here. Okay, okay, I, I don't know, did you get it for Kelly's collector in the, um, I haven't, I think, service charge?
Where are you at?
Twenty-one three?
I think twenty-nine.
I didn't really get how much, many more, is what he said.
I, I think that it was more like a couple thousand dollars, it could be different this year in that he thought he could work it within his total, he just wasn't sure what it was yet, so.
So, I guess, probably not really anything.
I'm there as far as I go. I'm sure his bills are just now being calculated for this year, so I don't know.
Does my heart good when you come in at eight o'clock and there's people already in line paying for the taxes.
I think we're gonna have to up the total for his budget to stay with them what is the amount required. We cannot change his product dollar. Okay. I don't know.
Like I said, his bills for this year aren't in yet, um, hopefully within the next week or so, but there's probably still a little bit of fishing and poking and plugging.
Because if he goes over this year, we didn't budget it this year.
Well, his bank service charges is, he's not saying he's gonna go over this year, with the new contract that they've just signed with the bank, he's saying that his monthly fees for bank service charges is going to go up. So, he should be fine this year, he just may need an extra thousand or so next year, and whether...
I'd say leave the bottom line the same right now, and then at the end of next year, put it in, just do that way.
Or if during the year he comes back and says, you know, I'm gonna be a thousand dollar short, then at that time, we...
Larry's been really...
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Why not just give him the twenty-eight thousand?
Well, what I'm, I'm saying...
He had twenty-eight thousand last year, or this year.
So, his budget's a little different, 'cause the overall number, the three fifty-seven, five A B seven, if you give him an additional three thousand dollars, he gets an additional three thousand dollars every year, whether he needs it or not, 'cause you can't cut it back out.
Can't cut this. And actually, we're going up anyway, because in two thousand fifteen, they were talking about it was three fifty-four, and it has stayed that way for quite some time.
Larry saved the county more money than I can shake a stick at, so why not give him?
Because if he doesn't use it, that's fine, he won't use it, but future collectors might. Get some screwball in there, then they're gonna, they're gonna see their bottom line, and they're gonna spend it and say, that's my money.
He's been three fifty-seven.
But he just requested twenty-five thousand, so.
But he's gonna have to transfer it to something else to pay for it.
I actually have to get a court order if we have to change it next year for his, I'd rather... That's just one.
So, three fifty, just leave it at three fifty-seven?
Yes.
Definitely have to change it.
Right, if he needs to come during the year and ask for more, I think, at that point.
But then you're changing it then, aren't you?
Well, if he has money left over and otherwise, he can still move within and change it to three fifty-seven. If he comes in next year in like September or October and says, hey, I'm out of money in all these lines, I need more overall, then you can increase the overall number.
Okay, one time to call out, we're good then, we'll leave it like that.
So, how come we have increased from fourteen, fifteen, now sixty?
If you look at the beginning of the original of fifteen, which was three fifty-four, to the amended three fifty-seven, that was the merit money that we didn't put in there to begin with, so...
He's been in three fifty-seven consistently for probably the last...
Yeah, I forgot that. Actually, that shouldn't change, but that's what that was.
Okay, alright.
Um, let's go to one fifty-five. You don't know, I'm sorry. I just made my notes everywhere.
Page seventy-eight.
Which is Bayless. That'll be the service, it's part-time, uh, the one that just started October, November, November, would be the only new one. She isn't, okay. I just wanted to reiterate that that's why that's going up so much, and so there's kind of a breakdown in there with part timers. These two that are on that pre-trial release, um, statistics that we got, and there's part timer, we have that part timer for the nine thousand five, and then any other time they have court, they need to bring people in. So, obviously, we're going from this year budget-wise, six, sixty thousand to seventy thousand, so if you guys agree to do that again, we'll leave it in there. And I mean, I mean, they had a lot of statistics on it, so... It's up to you. And we did the pre-trial release, you didn't mention anything about the twelve thousand on that line, and we were at fifteen this year, so...
I'm good with going up to seventy.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Keep stuff open, beds open in the jail, it keeps...
Yeah, bringing a lot of...
I'd say we're putting crooks on the streets, but there's people that can actually be protective citizens.
Yeah. So, is he okay on the pre-trial release program, the expense side to you then?
Mm-hmm, he never mentioned anything about that. We're gonna go to the health department next then, one forty-one, we'll need sixty-three. She had quite a few, um, things she was saying on her list there, some of them had already been changed, but there was one in the revenue, uh, some forty-eight, five, five, four, zero, zero, three. But that program was not going to be around anymore, and so that thirty-seven thousand, oh, thirty-seven will have to come down to zero.
Nope, it ends in May, so the thirty-seven is to get her through May.
It is?
Yep.
Maybe.
Yeah, and I think healthy beginnings runs through May of twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
And the thirty-seven is to get her through May.
So, that is right.
Yep.
Okay, so we don't... I know the other ones are zeroed out, but they were already zeroed out. What about four nine seven seven four one?
That was just, she was mentioning that the state refused our overall amount, and it's in there, less, one twenty-two, six forty-eight is down from the one forty-five sixty.
Alright, we're gonna give salary for that, um, who's had a special salary? Special projects, fifty-three, five, five, four. She had in her, she wants to do the application for, to be accredited, and that's four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, that would need to be added to that, she said that, it's on the paper. But she took it out.
But the cost went way up, so she took that to be added.
Says we will not be pursuing accredited, accreditation through the state.
Oh, no.
It's been a real long, it can be deleted.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, is it, do you have anything on that?
I didn't, I didn't have any notes to think she wanted to change others' salaries.
Head injury, she talked about it.
Uh, the thing with head injury was the fact that the personnel costs have gone up slightly, just because the salary increases, and it's not covering the total amount of mileage that she needs in there. So, she wanted to take that number back up to six, but that would mean the county was actually covering a portion of the travel for that grant, whereas before it was Boeing funded. She said she has approached the state about increasing that funding, 'cause they have taken on other counties.
Well, did she go back to those other counties, too, and then keep that up?
I don't...
Oh, no, she was talking about, she was talking about maybe cutting down some of the travel.
Right, so doing some of the, like, video conferencing and things like that, instead of traveling to them all the time. So, she's trying to cut that cost back, but she's trying to tell you that there could be an additional, um, two thousand seven hundred dollars traveled that's not currently budgeted. My problem with budgeting it in that actual line is that we like to keep those grants pretty clean, that you're only spending out of the grant what you're getting or any first for. So, uh, we talked about maybe running that additional mileage through her actual mileage line, instead of through that grant line.
We have a grant, that's all we have for it. So, why are we spending more money on this stuff if we don't have the grant money for it? I guess that's where I would come from.
That's, that's how they get started, these programs are to initiate, to...
I know, and then we need the whole cost.
Eventually.
That's just like some of the, they'll provide us a new officer, and then when that runs out, we got hell in their party.
Well, the problem with this one is it's been sixty-five thousand dollars a year for probably the last six or seven years, and although the person's salary fit in that when she applied for the grant originally, we have given COLAs in states over time that have actually increased that person's salary above what the original request was. The state has not increased their funding at all over the life of the grant, although we have actually given that person COLA increases. That's where we're getting off. It's not necessarily that it's the mileage, it's the total amount of the grant, it's not covering all of the salary benefits and the mileage. I mean, you could consider it that...
We need to tell the state they need to revamp their grant.
Well, I, I think that she's approached them with that, but that's not something that...
While we're doing it, let's ask the judges to pay for all their training and services, too, to see how far we get with that, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, if, if the majority of us being reimbursed, we're, we're still ahead of the game.
I mean, twenty-seven hundred dollars is probably the COLAs over the life of the grant that we've given, that the grant hasn't increased by that amount.
What is that service?
She works with people that actually have...
Head injuries.
Head injuries, people that are paralyzed and things like that.
You're not qualified.
I'm sure I am.
I'm sure I am.
But the brand encompasses multiple counties, so she does a lot of travel, I mean, she does, it's not just whole county, she travels.
So, we get anything from the other counties?
I don't...
I think it's a multi-county line.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, it's a service certain area.
We should, we can call some us, though. What are they, what are they gonna provide? These other counties can face them, mileage in.
And maybe Christie can approach them about that.
Yeah, I think, I think she's asked that they look at the funding and...
Clear us out, y'all had a grant, you're supposed to provide it.
And like she said, she, she's also looking at doing like video conferencing with people instead of traveling to them personally every time. I don't know if that's something that will happen swiftly or not.
That's what Cabaret is doing on some of their applications, though.
Well, would you guys like to leave it at the three thousand three hundred, or do you wanna increase it, or wait and see what happens? Maybe what their avenues she can figure out.
Remember, she did save us eleven thousand dollars on, uh...
Four thousand two hundred and fifty by not doing the application?
Well, but, uh, biohazardous waste or whatever that they're doing, so that's eleven thousand dollars.
Trash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that something that was currently budgeted in there?
Or if it was, it was very, it's so much...
I think they were, they were having a problem getting rid of some of their meals and stuff like that, and they have been working with, through EMS on combining that. I think they were just taking them over there and getting rid of them, but then Christie found this other company to take care of it, and so they're still getting rid of it the same kind of way.
And I think they changed the procedure on how you do the versus the way of...
Okay, wasn't that something for, for very people's...
I'm not sure.
It's recent, I think.
What is this note here on fifty-three, seven thirty-four immunization, that she says this line can be safely decreased to twenty-five thousand?
So, this is, fifteen was the first full year with vaccine care, so we're seeing some savings in the actual purchase of immunization. So, you can see that it actually went down from thirty-five to one five, she's saying that she feels comfortable with that, she said it could continue to go down beyond this, but that's where she feels comfortable with at the moment, 'cause they're not through the first full year yet. She goes, so she was insinuating that next year it could go down to four, but she feels comfortable with taking it to the twenty-five this year.
I just wonder how many vaccinations they actually did since the flu mist was not available, so...
Well, we got nineteen, that's up.
I guess most of that's immunization, though. I guess most of that immunization, though. That blue looks up to you now, or?
I would think so.
Yeah, they do some child.
They do some, what, three in one?
Yeah, I mean, they, they do some others, but I just did some blue.
So.
Okay, there you go.
No, we'll just leave the head injury the way it is for now? Is that what you guys agree on?
I'd just say a little bit. Christie does a good job out there for us and stuff, so she's asking for it or she's not just asking for it to ask for it. But I guess if I'm gonna pick on something for them right now, that'd be her head injury service court case.
Well, and, and then there's other things. There's one other line on it that would be effective whether we, uh, do the WIC, um, part-time provisions, so we won't get into that until we get into people.
She's getting rid of the faculty use prevention one. Uh, reduce the, um, there's several of them where she reduced it, so I hate to nickel-and-dime around the thirty-three hundred dollars, twenty-seven hundred dollars on the head injury one, but at the same time, it's money we wouldn't even have to spend if we didn't have a grant, so.
We can call that good in here until we come back and talk about.
Come back and talk about people.
Yep. We can go to the prosecutor, we have one on my end, other than people. He wants to talk about his criminal prosecution, and he was talking about.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two. He was talking about wanting to increase that line to eighty-three thousand.
What, where are we at?
In the one-sixty-three of the department.
One-sixty-three, okay, I think, one-sixty-three.
Um, this year, we have fifteen thousand in there. We transferred up to seventeen thousand, gives you sixteen-four.
What more line are we on?
Uh, five-three-two-one-four. Go to that activity.
So, that's where those transcripts are coming from, medical records, um, anytime they have to mail, FedEx, things like that for an actual case, um, court reporters that they actually have to come in and do deposition. Uh, I'm not sure what the Verizon wireless data usage is, that's new this year, it's a monthly recurring, but, uh, but I guess my thoughts were the jump from seventeen thousand to eighty-three thousand is huge.
Yeah.
Uh, I know that they're talking about those larger murder cases and things, but I guess my thoughts were we could handle it like we do jury, he could come back as he needed and explain why the cost was so much more instead of giving him that large lump sum upfront. And then if the case don't go or he doesn't incur the cost, then he has money in there to kind of play with if he wants to.
And he talked about having, uh, expert witnesses and stuff like that. Uh, so, you know, we are used to a lot of that being paid out as two other special funds that he has, and those two other funds have, uh, healthy balances. So, yeah, that's up to you guys.
I don't think I can justify.
I mean, even going to twenty-five from where we are is a jump.
It is.
And that was, uh, that was still for witnesses and stuff too.
Is that all the money that he asked for?
Yes, other than more space and.
But maybe.
Another employee wants to.
Yeah.
So, are you guys agreeing up to twenty-five or so?
Yeah, I am.
Um, I did want to let you know he is paying for those coffee machines that we talked about when he was here, added to a special award, sort of maintenance.
Oh, and if you look at that maintenance, go to that.
In there?
Yep. So, their note was originally eight thousand. The note, the amount on the outside was different, so that's, I actually gave him more than what he requested. He, he said I cut it. I guess I did from the outside number, but in looking at the note, I actually, I guess he had a different amount outside than fourteen thousand than the note inside of it.
Okay, so what are you recommending?
Uh, I thought the nine thousand four fifty was it, but that does not include any copiers.
And, and because of the least thing that he entered into, I don't think we'll be paying.
I don't think so either. I don't think so.
Did we ever get that cleared up?
Uh, I never heard response back from them, but I.
I didn't remember hearing one either. I know we've, I always sent them a letter saying they can't enter into agreement.
We have not paid any agreement, so I'm assuming that they're paying monthly charges.
They're paying.
So, we'll just leave it at ninety-four fifty unless we have other.
I guess unless there's.
Agreements.
Change, yeah.
Say we're gonna maintain them?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So, we're going to twenty-five?
I'd like to see that at twenty.
I was kinda leaning towards that too, because whenever I was.
I mean, that fifteen this year, it's like I can, I'd spend fifteen.
Maybe it's a sixteen-four-one-four, I never.
Why is that projected?
Why is that projected?
Well, the projected is fifteen and the activity is sixteen.
Because of the time difference between when I get the budgeted projected out compared to what they've actually spent so far. So, our, our main projection was done before any of the activity in October, November.
Probably sent a couple of big bills in last month or two after.
Okay.
But I, I think twenty should be enough for now. It's almost double what he had twenty-fourteen in activity.
And it's still, I wonder what budget is this, this year? Five-five thousand. Perfect, yeah. Okay.
Is that saying?
Need to get to twenty-five.
Yeah, all right, Dad.
Yes, sir.
If they have a lot of trials.
Don't call your big brother instead.
That's fine. I told him, it's not old enough to be both of your fathers. I might spank you every.
Like we get the aggregate twenty.
We hit the squad.
We're gonna go to one-twenty-four, Public Administrator.
Oh, are y'all still in budget?
Yeah.
Cool. Keep all moving. One-twenty-four?
I think mileage, um, she wanted thirty-five hundred there.
Eight-sixty.
Instead of the three thousand, which is a difference of one five hundred dollars more. We just did a transfer, so she, we did give her three thousand last year, we're up to thirty-four, three thousand four fifty. Uh, she's still got bills coming in, so, I mean, I don't think thirty-four or thirty-five hundred is out long.
I, she does a lot of coming around stuff. I don't, I don't know if there's some ways that they can do stuff, because of people they work with don't probably have computers either, money to do anything.
Well, and I think that a lot of her people like the hands-on, you know, seeing her in person.
I think when she retires.
I'm sure people like that kind of stuff, but they sure don't wanna pay for it either.
She, she has a large number of cases. This is probably traveling to see them once a year. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's like I'm going to see people monthly. I don't, I don't even think some of them she's getting to see once a year, so I don't.
I think some of us though just go in and check and make sure that the money that they are just persons going to the right place and that person is safe and not locked up in a closet even, so. Unfortunately, you have to do this, do this stuff.
Visiting the hospitals and nursing homes and things like that to make sure they are getting the treatment they're supposed to. So, would you guys agree thirty-five hundred is okay?
I'm fine with that.
And then I'll leave capital for the end too, because she has something else to show me. We'll just.
Done?
No.
We're talking about chairs and credentiahs and show me.
I have about one of the credenza.
Page forty-four.
By that time, you'll be, you'll be with us and we'll all be saying no.
Yeah, maybe we should have done.
It was, somebody wanted a credenza, well, somebody wanted to get rid of their credenzas. We just, we give them.
Yeah. What, move on.
One-twenty-five, they're still in fund one hundred.
Right.
We can wait on the part-time and the MOU, but would like meetings and travel to be at two thousand one forty-five. So, we'll just talk about meetings and travel.
So, do you have it, she, the two thousand one forty-five excluded mileage? So, the mileage and the meeting travels together, I actually have fifty dollars more than what he was asking for. I think he's just asking for it to be broken down differently, because the two thousand one forty-five.
Three eighty in mileage, you said, we've got mileage.
Five hundred.
And then it's, so the three eighty off of the twenty-one forty-five.
The three eighty off three.
A hundred fifty to the one, a hundred fifty to the other, and then eighty.
So, I think it, it, overall, it's fifty dollars less, and what I have is Judy wanted it moved around.
And so, that comes to seventeen sixty-five, so if we did that, put seventeen sixty-five there and reduce the.
Does he have anything for Judy's travel mileage? She was gonna get rid of her, making trips to post office, so I don't know that that's three eighty.
So, what's he want to do? Seventeen sixty-five, I mean, travel and dues, that's fine.
And then three hundred and eighty in mileage.
Three eighty mileage.
So, we don't think he's got.
So, you probably need to put my fifty back in there. The net effect would be zero, it's just the fact that he's changing the.
So, what do we change the mileage to?
To be the three eighty plus the fifty.
Four thirty.
I can't cover, just that adds up to it. So, together is twenty-one ninety-five, which was actually more than.
So, Debbie, you want to go on that meeting travel on that note and actually change the note? I think I have all those things. I'm all the version.
Five hundred and fifty.
I sound confused with these things, but.
Whatever balances, we're missing that, and five, we moved seventeen sixty-five. Did that work?
That's a couple, or next year try to figure it out.
That is.
You can copy it.
Okay, so that's it, if guys will talk about.
People.
People and capital.
So, no Jesus to any of the other funds besides your?
Oh, yes.
Please, if you know.
Yes, should be on the left. Let's go to assessor, show me. Two-thirty is the fund, should be mailed in department there, so it should be fine. Page one-oh-two.
You can add, like, a professional service.
Okay, so how do you do that? Forty was the original.
Okay, two-thirty is the fund, what department are we going to?
If you just load two-thirty with no department, it should come up to a dollar.
Where's baseball?
That is a public to the tax.
Five hundred and fifty.
The print.
Okay, so the two-thirty, uh, is in the department, right. Otherwise, you get you nothing. Again, I think. There we go. Those ain't got, we're there.
But he didn't use it. Hold on to.
Oh, man.
Twenty-seven dollars.
Pretty sad, that's lost a nice, nice home spot.
Well, I don't know. Because after that, it includes the Amber case, so now we'll go back.
Two, now we'll get rid of, good luck with all that girl.
Okay, he was talking about professional services, uh, five, two, two, eight, three.
Look in that note. So, I actually gave him thirty thousand dollars for appeal attorneys and appraisers. He just wanted seventy-five thousand. In twelve, he spent like less than three thousand dollars. In thirteen, he spent twelve thousand dollars total. Fourteen and fifteen are skewed because the Amber case is in there, so like fourteen was fifty-two thousand, and this year he spent over a hundred. But look, if that's that Amber case, I do not know of any reason why he would need seventy-five thousand dollars in professional services to size the Amber case.
This is the one where he goofed up.
Right, so if you go back into that note, he had one number. He had one number in there and he had ten thousand out here, so.
So, he was more worried about this being here and not coming out to the front.
So, we've spent a hundred and some odd thousand in the Amber thing this year, I think.
Right, we're up to about a hundred and twenty-three. I, we have some bills in this front.
So, he's basically spent twenty-five thousand this year on professional services minus Amber.
Well, go, go there, you can go to the activity. I can see all that, well, to go down. I mean, I think it's, mainly it's Nuba Kamalit-Ru, who does his other, um, things, is that you see the four in Chirac and then companies, the fifteen and the six, uh. All of the larger bills in there besides that fifteen and six have basically been on the Amber case. And actually, Nuba Kamalit-Ru is his contact person on Amber and also, so that's kind of skewed the number for them also.
So, why did you give him a hundred fifty-two thousand?
Well, if you look at the note, I gave him thirty thousand for those types of things, and then the hundred and twenty-two, one forty is the rest of the Amber case.
But we're not paying that.
We're gonna get reimbursed.
We're gonna pay it up front and the school district's gonna reimburse us for it, so we'll have to budget it.
Yeah, our contract's with them, and then we have a contract with them to.
And where will the, will the money go back and do the assessment on us?
Yes, so it is actually budgeted in, it's going to be one hundred eighteen four oh six.
As revenue?
Yes.
If we don't actually use it then this year, it's no big deal.
So, the question at this point is, is that our agreement with the schools and even the agreement with the other county, he said, if they appeal beyond this point, I don't think our agreement covers that, so there could be additional cost due just to us if we continue fighting the case. That's something that I don't feel out upon if I, or if we.
And I, I can bring Jill here, but she was talking about how the. And I'm, I can bring Jill here, but she was talking about how the, that that is true, that they get appealed to the court, certain court. I, I've heard this update.
Yeah, at some point, when we first decided to do that, of course, all like you were saying, we said that we would take so far, and then we may decide to get out, or the school district will have to go out.
So far, we've won the first court, and now it's up to them, and they have thirty days till they can take it to service, and each of the counties that we're going to, and so I assume we're taking it to service now when that happens. But that, the other deal should be done, and I was waiting till we had all the bills in on the first case.
Well, and it, it's kind of weird also because the first porting of the cases, there's thirteen taxes had been settled, and that's the part they're appealing to the court. Fourteen and fifteen, they're still fighting, so the case we currently have is still ongoing on fourteen and fifteen taxes, thirteen is the one they want to appeal. So I, I think that the current amount we have in there is gonna have to stay there until they're done fighting fourteen and fifteen tax amounts. It's, at this point, we probably need to have some discussion about the thirteen amount and how far we want to fight for it.
Well, I would assume that they're thinking that the thirteen will set the precedence for fourteen, fifteen and beyond, if they get that.
Well, I, I don't necessarily understand what the reasoning was not taking the case as a whole. Cause they're fighting for the same assessed valuation over all three years, so I don't...
It's the formula.
Right, it's the formula, how we're calculating it, so how they can determine one year without determining the other two, I don't know, cause it's the same formula all three years. So I don't know nothing about the case to know.
Right. I mean, if they, if they win the case and they alter the formula, then it's gonna change their tax going forward, yeah.
Yes.
I'm kind of good with the formula, too.
And again, you guys control that fund. Okay?
I don't like it.
Yes, we control the assessment fund.
And then the rest of it is personnel, but I have...
I just, that's crazy.
Okay. Remember, we can talk about account five, six, two, six, oh, which is Campbell. Everyone, no, I'm telling what we get.
So, nothing, nothing in funds, where are we, department?
We're gonna go to fund, either way, you can go department two eleven, fund two hundred.
Page ninety-seven.
Okay. There was some debate over Campbell, so I just wanted to bring that back up, but you guys will leave that in there for now, we just want to do about fund six, two, six, oh.
That was just over there. That was over the big increase in Campbell, right?
Yeah. Well, I guess we take it all, that's the way that you guys are talking.
So we take...
But it definitely has to be.
Oh, there was an increase in it. I think it's twenty-five.
Yeah, so we pay forty-five, he pays seventy-five.
I just wanted to make sure there is no changes needed to be made there.
Being on that board, our city staff does do a ton of work for this, and we do get some projects out of it. Uh, just luckily, we got Pioneer Trail, that came through there, real fun, or not real, uh, safe routes that came through it.
The way finding, it went through there.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's more or less a city-county co-op project, kind of what I would get it to, there have been stuff, have been things outside of incorporating some of the...
I got, I got a question for you. I'll just ask later about it, remind you. On that wayfinding and stuff.
Okay. That's not one of my favorite projects.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Projects, like... Just inside the city, I'm gonna run with it.
Four hundred, yeah.
Are they getting close to any of the stuff from there that you're working on the highway? On lock, yeah, I mean, that...
I'm trying to remember the last update, I mean, they had, were talking about getting kind of what they want the signs to look like and stuff, so they're, I think it's still ways off, but it's in the process.
I think they're gonna do some there with...
Arc Taurus, is that?
Yeah, Arc Taurus, are they gonna do some there where Madison comes in?
Arc Taurus with the...
Cause there's still money in it.
Our guy on, on the...
Education.
Yeah, education.
I thought they were doing something with the wayfinding, too, they're making recommendations for the signs and helping to promote, like the downtown area will have a color that is common. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just more or less concerned on that. Cost of the sign.
Some of that, like cap regions, cap regions.
State won't allow you to make the signs, you have to go through them because they have their way of doing them. If it's along state routes, I understand, they're in control of how that sign goes up, even if we wanted to put up something on the city level signs, but a lot of these signs are not in state route way, they'll be...
I think downtown's giving, giving money, I think cap region's giving.
So I don't know, and there are some weird shaped signs, they're not just signs that we have, I don't, and I don't know, I know we make our own signs, or we can.
Right, put on our roads, so the city and, I mean, the state, I'm sure God has signs out there, they'll...
I don't know what that design and stuff, what all we do with ours, you know, we can put black lettering or whatever on a yellow sign, or white lettering on a green sign or whatever, but I don't know if we can do this. You know, you have a capital form gone in different colors, yeah, so I don't, you know, when we could, I don't know if we got a Campbell meeting, I think it's maybe next week, tell them, might be a long. Cause if I think about it, I'll see if maybe we want to have a meeting and, I think, come up and do a presentation on it if you want, just kind of do an update.
That was the only thing I was really concerned about.
I know there's some artwork, I've seen some artwork on it, but that's been a lot, been a lot of money on really expensive signs.
But they're pretty and help people get around town.
Wait, you see the towers, they're gonna put these signs, overpass.
Okay, well, um, so we'll just leave that alone for now, the fourteen oh sixty-three, and the...
For the bridge?
For the overpass.
Yeah, but that'd look a lot better coming in and seeing an old nasty looking rock like it used to.
Oh, no, that's, that's, but, um, each end of the, each overpass, you're gonna have...
They got lights in there, they can change the colors, too, for seasonal stuff, or J's have that.
I'd be in that road, break state championship or something going on, the red.
Load fund six hundred, don't put in a department.
We're gonna go with six hundred, Sheriff's Department. What do you think of?
Uh, one oh seven.
These are already at departments.
Well, we might as well just look at it all together, there's not that much there.
Has to be thirty-four fund?
No, no, you're wrong.
Six hundred, fund, not department. Please, Department of Labor.
That's I, that's Department.
Sorry. Federal prisoners, he was thinking he wants, but we run the siege more money, um, we always like to be conservative, so I say believe in Christian estimate, which is...
What number are you?
I'm sorry, is this seven oh four, uh, six hundred, seven oh four revenue?
Four three, two oh eight, debt, oh oh one.
There we go. Federal prisoners' revenue, we have five thirty this year, Christians going up to seven eighty, what's on that? He talked about eighty-four.
So their estimate was seventy thousand per month of revenue, I did sixty-five thousand per month. Um, they're just from fourteen monthly amounts, fifteen monthly amounts, and it's huge, so we tried to average two years to get to sixty-five instead of drastically jumping to the seventies.
So, they just leave that one at home, as far as that goes?
So what about the board of prisoners? Is it favored by three twenty?
Yeah, he didn't say anything about that one.
I'm good with seven eighty. Who else?
Yeah, I'm still trying to get to the...
Revenue wise, what pages?
Yeah, does it, this has got so many different revenues on the pages.
One oh six.
Uh, yeah, we got it now.
Um, the only other question, you questioned the nine one one expense, but it didn't matter.
Sixty-five thousand per month is what Christians was based on?
Yep.
And then their department was based on, so I'd rather keep it conservative, too, all right.
Okay, where you at on nine one one?
Nine one one, that's seven oh one expense, um... Yes, it is new.
Five two eight one one.
Yep.
Five eight one oh seven.
But years before, it came out of their budget, um, we also had admin costs that come out of their budgets that they have not seen in their budget, when we were trying to make that, but it balanced.
Fund seven oh one.
I was looking for one eighty-five, two thirty-three, I thought you said, oh...
That's in here.
There's fifty-two, eight eleven.
Nine one one, fifty thousand.
How much is eight thirty-three?
One eighty-five, two thirty-three.
Eight, eight eleven.
Oh, he said one eighty-five, two thirty-three, that's in balance.
That's in balance, sorry.
You oughta let me get that first.
So, again, it works, it balances, and we can look at that twenty-year plan when we get done with the sheriff, to see that we look good, we're on track, um, not to say things could change, but... I don't think, I think the nine one one needs to stay in there, but...
So I'm good with putting the nine one one in there, but I, it seemed like I saw the nine one one under general accounts or something, too?
Uh, it should be zero. Zero in general accounts, but it's in EMS, so we let that be fifty-fifty.
So was there a one-time cost that we were gonna be...
That is not in there, fully.
I have that scheduled out of sales times, now whether you want to schedule that out of the EMS, the six fifty sales time, EMA sales times?
Okay.
Or the counties are, are fifteen percent, we can talk about that, but I figured since that's a one-time capital, and I just don't know when that's coming.
So there's one eighty-five, is that a fifty-fifty split between law enforcement and...
The only difference is, is law enforcement pays for like a phone line for twenty-four ninety-two or something a month, so theirs is about two hundred and ninety-three dollars more than EMS decides, but otherwise it's like fifty-fifty.
So, and overtime in seven oh four, you can look at that if you want, so we could save that for salary costs, but overtime in the jail? And we can definitely talk about that with physicians that have been budgeted in there.
All right. Oh, yeah.
One oh nine.
Overtime in seven oh four, page one oh nine, or slide one oh nine, or day one oh nine?
Department, seven oh four.
Well, damn it, this is a huge fund, and I can't get the stuff.
I'm just telling you.
Yeah, but it's still down about fourteen pages, I don't know where, she says overtime, I don't know where overtime is, I got it, it's on page one oh seven, it's on page one oh nine.
One oh nine, over.
We got fourteen overtimes here.
There's only four.
Four.
So why? So he requests four physicians, and is overtime and part-time are still the same? Basically. Actually, he wants them hired.
Yeah, he's used eighty-four, and overtime in the jail, at the end of November.
The four physicians is not gonna take away any of his part-timers, we're hoping that you keep the physicians filled with the full-time compared to the part-time, cause right now, their full-timers are covering overtime for the part-time people that they can't keep filled. So I don't think that the four physicians would affect part-time, cause those part-time physicians are not gonna go away, it's just, they're not always totally filled. I reduced his overtime back to the sixty thousand and left it the same, he was wanting to increase it, but the reason for those increases is the medical people that they're sitting in the hospital for, or things like that, and that's what his increases for in overtime is, those kind of situations.
And Tyson said he had sixty thousand to start this.
Right.
I can use sixty thousand last year.
Cause I can't tell you what those four physicians are gonna stage.
So basically, he's keeping the same overtime, part-time.
Wonder if they don't step that up, right? That's actually more.
Plus, there'll be a MOU sign for the, again, for next year, if you guys want, for the one full-time and one part-time for the guns, PCL carry. But the three physicians, the one free full-time deputy, uh, jailers, uh, which costs you about a hundred and thirty-one thousand a year, and then the one full-time detective would then, seven oh three, would cost you about fifty-two thousand. So, we don't need to talk about that now, but it's up to you guys, if you want to go there, other than that, but, cause that kind of affects the overtime there, so I didn't know whether you wanted to jump into that, but that was the only other expense account, but did you have any other expense accounts that you questioned?
I'd be more apt to hire more jailers, if we could eliminate a lot of this part-time and overtime, which to me is, it's a direct correlation, I mean, you hiring more people full-time, it's gonna cost you less. Than paying overtime, well...
If you can get, I have a piece on boot counting jail, I forget how many jailers there are counting.
I, I mean, I get it, it's not a lot that, a lot of people want, but... I mean, it's been the same on EMS before, too, it's kind of a double-edged sword. If they're hiring more full-time people, you would think it would reduce the amount of part-time people that would be...
But the part-time, you're not paying benefits on.
Right, but if you're paying all that overtime...
New, new people did not include a reduction of this part-time staff.
I'm sure it did.
Which, which, I mean, you could add, that's...
What I'm saying is that if you're paying, you know, overtime, you're paying at a time and a half, it'd be cheaper to pay the benefits and hire more full-time people.
I don't understand that part either, cause if you look at, like, A and B or any of these press companies, and they pay overtime left and right, now it's not, well, they just hired another person, but they don't, so I don't know if I don't understand that right.
I think some of theirs is more seasonal, they get into certain contracts, and they have to push to get it done by a certain date, and it's easier for them to only have those people that are currently there paying them overtime than it is to hire full-time staff for the whole year, so...
Then whenever we have the abundance of, uh, needing to transfer some of these patients, and they have to ride around in ambulance with them, that's kind of seasonal, too, you never know when that's gonna happen, so...
Right, right, I, I don't, I mean, I don't, I think the problem is, is they have somebody, I think it's a university, that they had to sit on for twenty, twenty-four seven, so do you take a full-timer to do that, or do you take part-timers and switch them out? I, I don't know what the logistics are to have somebody sit in the hospital outside of a room for twenty-four seven while they're in the hospital, I don't, I don't know the logistics of what that would take, and how often would you change your part-timer out, would you have one person sit there for twelve hours?
You see some of the corrections, the state corrections, you've got, you see some of them, they've got two of them.
Right. And I know that there are some restrictions, that they have to have so many people on them if they're outside the facility, so it might be two, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I've just seen, I've seen corrections.
Do they actually do that? You don't hope it's a jailer?
I don't think it requires that it's a deputy, but I could be wrong there too.
But we have...
Outside mine.
Right. I'm sure we asked enough questions somewhere.
Yeah, we asked, right.
I'm sorry.
But, you know.
But we can finish this one, I have one more that has nothing to do with personnel or capital, and then we can get back into personnel.
Perfect. You go on.
And that is actually seven, uh, sales tax, which is just road bridges sales tax, which is 700.
So EMS didn't have anything to say?
No, because I have overtime and part-time and capital. Unless you've got 103.
700, 802, or 803?
803.
122 is... 800, 700, fund, department, 803.
700, maybe double 3.
Okay, and then 54, 908, bridge construction. I just want to let you know that they wanted to increase that by 700.
I'm just holding on one side. I'm not that fast with this or something.
I thought you said you were okay. That's what I thought.
So Kristin, jailer, 125, and they're wanting 200?
200. They wanted 75,000 dollars more in stormwater projects, which I guess they decided after they submitted budget, because they asked for 125,000 and I gave 125,000. So...
Really didn't ask for enough, huh?
I guess. Because, I mean, I gave them what they asked for, so they've come since then, and so they needed an additional deficit back after.
And then they wanted to take the 75 out of contingency? They've got to us for all that anyway, so...
Yeah, for whatever project that was in jail. Just want to let you know that Kristin did put that in our new accounts for NIP too.
So that contingency and...
Um, down at the bottom, by 60.
Again, this is the last of the five-year sales tax, so that's unusual to have a small amount. Okay, now, what's your buzzer on capital versus... Should we hit the break first?
No, okay, one second. Before we get into...
I can get a little more coffee.
Gotta get us a break.
We're just here to leave, right?
Yes, yeah, because I gotta do a little bit of work and then probably, how long does it take to get to...
I mean, I can stay till afternoon, but...
I'll leave at 1:30.
Going forward, it'll be 20 minutes.
I don't know how far down that is.
Drive like me, we'll be there 12. Just won't follow me?
Yeah, I'll follow you.
I'm playing an audit. Hope he's there on time. Doesn't want to say it, but what?
No, it's, it's just a...
If we're doing efforts, we can...
I think it's just a photo I'm for today.
No, he'll talk. The one we did capital sand too, he said blah, blah, blah.
The thing I got was, I'll be introducing you to Paul Carey.
She said that inmates and starlings are getting older, and they're going back to their parents. She said that for inmates who need to wait for that time period, or like... Well, that's what people think, and I'm like, you can't, if they can imagine what they're gonna do, then they're done. Did you say that's what she... Because I know you guys are making sure it's not something else, but people... Well, they're... And he was talking... And he had... Warner, they have to check, and told us, I don't know, when everything starts, and it's over 30. She's saying, she's saying for the director of office, you know?
What's that stuff, whatever matters in the yard now? I guarantee you, they don't, they don't want to change. They don't want any changes. They want to keep control of it and that's...
Oh boy.
That's part of what's proper.
Much better.
Occasionally need a bathroom break.
Drank three cups at Brew House this morning, and then I got a big one to go.
I don't ever seem to go there.
It's a nice, quiet place, so if you want to have a meeting with somebody, it's, you don't have, I like to see yours, but I mean, boy, you, you got no privacy there. You got everybody, you got city, county, you know, sheriff, you got lobbyists, you've got legislators, you've got... Highway patrol, that's probably the safest place in town, because there are more people that are armed.
It's good coffee though, I mean...
Oh, their coffee, their rocket feels good.
Coffee's coffee.
Uh-uh.
It's a rock that stuff.
Good if I keep your pipes clean.
Yeah.
Are you getting sick? You sound like you're...
No, I hope not. I think I got over whatever I had earlier last week. I've protected about 1,700 of the coldies things. I like them whenever you start feeling sick. You ever had them? Their coldies, they got, their cough tops, they got some zinc or something in them.
Huh, I've never heard of that.
I've never heard of it either.
Did my husband tell you that he's not longer in charge outside?
What happened there?
He didn't stack sales now?
Oh, he's gonna love that. I've been bringing some trash out there. Sometimes it wasn't necessary with their jobs. I dropped some off the other day, just they don't like that. Hey, you dropped some trash? Yep, did one of our jobs, and said, no, we buy all my stuff from you also. Hell, we can't do that. Well, all right. How you get talk stuff, you know, and she was mad at us. Just send me a bill. It's kinda convenient having a dumpster out there, half the time I'm doing their jobs. So who's in charge out there now? Who wants Doug?
Uh, he dressed a big, the last year, or did.
Okay, we're trying. Big tall dude, younger?
Yeah, taller, yeah, healthier.
That's our nerd? Okay, I got one of those. Yeah, it was in store.
So they get more money for being...
I'm, I'm sure not right away, but...
Okay, well, what do you guys want to talk about?
All right, that's headache.
You want to talk about capital, or you want to talk about people?
If you want to go with it.
Let's do capital, then do people on one day and one time.
I forgot what's that chair saying?
So you do it 700, 802, or you move them where else?
I was just gonna get the list. Do you want, okay, let's do that first. Okay, we'll go to 700, 802.
Do you just want this list on the front page?
Yeah, you got them all.
All the ones that are for recorder, and then the ones, the people that added during the day when they were here, but...
Well, I just want to know, do you want to pick and choose what capital that people are going to get now?
121, 802.
Or do we just want to have a flat dollar amount in there, and then just come back to use later? It's totally up to you, because right now, Kristin has in there computerization, 250,000, capital 700,000, and we have a nice contingency of 450. So...
So carry forward, go there.
That one we need to take a look at, because that 700,000 in capital, crew and included, I think, the purchase order for the HVACD at juvenile, and if we pay that out before the end of the year, that number probably would go down.
About 250,000.
So...
We're in game, watching.
You got the spreadsheet to show us all?
I was gonna say, in terms of the date, my, my was just need that to sit, but it was not.
It's not that long, I don't know.
So printer's gonna be half that, more than half that stuff?
No.
No, we...
No, this will be next year, tomorrow.
So this was on, um, November 16th, okay? So at November 16th, our cash balance was 914. And if you bring that forward at that point, plus what the one check that we had to go, you have about 960. Obviously, right there is the big one that's gonna come out of there, which is the juvenile. At that point, juvenile is not out of there, the HVACD back.
So we paid about half of that juvenile?
That's right. So here's the generator. Here's the security thing, we paid some of that, not all of that. We only had paid 114,000.
We got a commission F drive, or do we have the R F drive? I don't know, I guess so.
We're plugging one. It's on your, it's on your F drive in our commission budget, under 2016.
So if it was nine there, I think if I cash forwards, the 548 took the HVACD, so the 548, 419 was actually...
And with all of those still out there, we, we should end with 247. If everything got paid this year, we would end at 247. And then, of course, you take that 247 and plus 800, 89,000 addition to it. You're gonna have, let's see, Kristin, 3. It's under 60.
Like a little more because they're gonna hire the cashless. I'm thinking 548 or 247.
What's that transfer, though?
That's the 3% asset, 3% administrative fee that goes back to general, based on the revenue, like every other, like every other fund except for law.
Are you on that form too?
I'm not, I'm just watching, no, I'm just, I'm not on that one.
On the F drive?
I F drive, commission F drive.
Yeah, come back to that F drive. And it's commission F drive.
That's where I have that commission.
And now go into giant budget, commission budget. And then down, we should do the sales tax.
All right.
I think we're totally bored, you know, 700.
I'm totally bored.
Sure I am. I'm trying to make this...
I think after, after you think, you're all day, I would...
Only 120 is the list.
And again, the 120, in the book is the list of what people want, plus we add some more there when we talk to the people, public administrators.
In the book?
Yep, in the book, 120.
Okay, thank you. In the book, fight yourself. You're bored, go fight it.
Okay, well, you can see there, we got a request for over 2.5 million.
And some of that, though, like the windows are included at the top, which is gonna come out of general, so the 775 and the 250 that maintenance had requested, that cost is currently coming out of general, but not out of sales tax.
So you're about 2,005,000.
What do we have to work with?
But of that 863, probably 150 or 200,000 is gonna have to be for computerization, because Dale had a link down there.
Right, and here, so that's why it gets condensed into this nice, easier one over here, which is the computerization, again, when Dale has that list attached. He did have some other items that were not listed there that potentially may happen, or again, with your all support, your all's approval. And the capital. So to me, you do, you do not have to agree on that right now. You can come up with what you feel like is the right contingency to have, and then the rest of it, you can throw into capital. And then, you know, you had a siren request for an additional siren, you had a refrigerator request, an ice maker request, and again, the...
Did it went down the trailer or something?
Oh, I think you were just carrying one.
Well, we just paid for it, we were carrying it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think she asked for anyone.
No, she, yeah.
Because she didn't have the lines even included. I had a mini fridge for the trucker and a credenza replacement, and I had shelving for the public administrator, emergency maintenance, we wanted to do the two additional sirens, and then it was our mistake, the recorder of needs had a list of capital items that somehow got left off this page, so this was a separate sheet, but I think he gave you guys a copy of that today.
Can we try to get some of that stuff put all together, just get a full list from, from everybody, and then maybe we go through and pick and choose, or, or give them X number of dollars and say, here you go, get what you can.
Well, and, I mean, some of it too, like the health department wanted that small SUV, but we talked about changing over vehicle at the ambulance, so you could transfer that vehicle. So there are some things on the list that, like I said, the windows are on there currently that need to come up, and then I know juvenile asked for, like, maintenance, one is the bathroom is needing to be redone, and he said that...
But then Michael said, if we would bring in a professional cleaners after they're all done...
So there are some changes from when the...
That may or may not affect it though.
And I think the freezer, I don't think about, hey, so the freezer, there was a federal grant for, so...
All right, I can get you the list the best I can, and I'll check it with Kristin before we bring it in on Wednesday, and we'll talk about capital then.
We got all systems in there somewhere too?
It's gonna come out of capital, it'd be a purchase order that goes forward.
So it's already encumbered?
Okay, so it's already in there, I mean, it's...
Well, it depends on where we're at at the end of the year, how much we paid of it.
Right.
So whatever's left that we haven't paid, we did carry forward.
And again, it's just a big, flat, round dollar amount, so you can control the expenditures that go out, obviously, you'd have to sign contracts or get, they would have to get approval from you guys before they did it.
I know it's a different fund, but, I mean, could we look at road bridges and EMS and kind of look at it, all the capital expenses together? I mean, I realize it's coming out of different funds, but...
So I don't think the road bridge had a large number of capital items from their particular budget, other than the reskinning of the building, I think with their remaining capital. Now, they do have some equipment purchases out of their portion of the sales tax. Do you want all of that on one one?
I'd like to look at all of it. Because to me, I don't know, for me, we need to kind of look at it more county-wide, even though it's just coming out of different funds. But, because if we don't, then we got, we got EMS, and we got health, and maybe we can take a vehicle here, and, I mean, so we can do some of that.
Right.
and maybe we can take a vehicle here and, I mean, so we can do some of that.
Right.
And then do we, uh, speaking of that, are we just in year one of the leases on the trucks from the sheriffs?
They're in year two.
When will that come? That's a two-year lease, one another, or is it a three?
You get to buy.
Oh, I don't think so.
I'm pretty sure it's five. We pay the first four years and then we have an option to buy in the mid-year.
Okay. I didn't think it'd be that long.
Yeah, cause I think they're limited to like ten or fifteen thousand a year. And then it's gonna still be under the fifteen thousand. I'm pretty sure it's a five-year lease. And the first year was four. So it would have renewed in the middle of this year, so we're in the second year of that.
So maybe we got a.
And I'm in the process of getting all the mileage on all the vehicles, so you'll have that. Come one year, now we have one, two years, so you have much to do.
We're kind of always out of the loop with all the sheriff's vehicles too, and it'd be nice if we were more included in that. I mean, I realize most of it's stuff that he gets rid of as junk, but, um, as he upgrades and he's got some upgrades in his budget, six, six new vehicles.
Yes, and that list is attached.
So I would assume, um, looking at some of the mileage that he had, um, maybe there's some vehicles in there that we can repurpose, maybe not, but it's just.
Those that's.
Is that one?
The ones he's getting rid of are not.
I realize that.
Is that one vehicle that Juvenile attended? Is that, is that one of our old sheriff's cars?
Yes.
Is that Chevy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's Crown Big.
No?
It's not a Crown Big, it's an Impala.
Chevy Impala.
Yeah.
I mean, he had some vehicles that were well over a hundred thousand mile, which I'm sure he was the first ones to go.
So go to the attention, I'm not sure he breaks out on his vehicles, how many are new and how many are, cause I know they still like new.
So he's suggesting A replacement at an average of thirty thousand. Should be two forty.
And the thing to remember with theirs is they have all the moving of the.
Right.
Light bars and all that. So their thirty thousand is not just.
Right, it's probably not outfitted.
So can we transfer?
Well, the thirty thousand includes the outfitting, so it, they're not buying new, they're moving. So that thirty thousand per car is not a cost of the actual physical car, it's the cost with it.
Putting the decals and the lights and everything else on it.
Right.
Yeah, he, he's trying to do.
That's really not bad.
The California package or whatever, where all the lights go inside.
Yeah, that's really not bad.
And he does have a, um, I think you were put in the email, like highlighted that are over a hundred thousand mileage on, and I'm sure that's what those are slated for.
I just think if we, if we would look at these things more together, then maybe we would have a better idea of, you know, planning these vehicles or whatever, that maybe we can look at purchasing stuff more as county than.
I, I definitely think that their leases, when they're up, is a good option, cause at that point, those vehicles are going to be fairly new vehicles with low mileage.
Right.
A lot of his Crown Bigs is still.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're averaging a two thousand dollar salvage value out of most of the vehicles that he's getting rid of at this point.
So.
And that's not a problem.
Right. The trucks. The, the trucks come due, I mean, it may be a good buy.
It might be a good divide, yeah.
Right.
Or if you already got them all.
I definitely think that we need to look at that option.
Yeah.
And what they're used for, what's the difference?
Yeah, probably need to revisit what that, what our cost was to run them for four or five years or whatever the term of lease is, if this is, if that's something that we want to try to do again. Especially people that are using them for miles.
I'd ask, um, the sheriff's department that question specifically, if you were gonna do it again, would you? Uh, they said for certain positions, like the detectives or something, it works well because they don't have a lot of miles and they have to carry a lot of stuff. Um, but he said for like the sheriff and stuff, he goes, they don't need a vehicle that big and that it's not really serving the greatest purpose, so, I mean, I think that there are certain vehicles that that makes sense with, but I don't know that they would do that many and.
Not economical.
Right.
To drive them. Too big of a vehicle. Poor gas mileage.
Right, right.
I guarantee he'd want something just as big though, he'd want an Explorer or.
Well, and I think that we got a fairly good.
Suburban or.
Well, I was coming back from, uh, from, from the lodge after that. Here, here comes this big Tahoe, black Tahoe, all tricked out, you know, and it's, it's, uh, Cape Girardeau County, Commish One.
Commish One.
No, just say Commish One.
Commish.
And I'm like, yeah.
They're local county.
And I'm like, well, man.
Calhoun County has vehicles.
Calhoun County has vehicles. They're not very pretty.
No.
This was, this, this, this Cape Girardeau, okay, it was pretty. I'm like, man.
But what's mileage for the meetings we go to that we submit maybe five or six hundred dollars a year? Health is keeping that car and having it insured, it costs us more than that.
I'm sure they drive a lot too.
They might.
Some of them might, but they.
If you got Commish One on it, I would have bet you he's taking.
I'd give Quinn a hard time about that next time I see him.
He was speeding too. Well, it was raining hard. I'm like, man, I'm just sitting there doing, I'm just sitting there doing like sixty miles an hour, cause it was, I was, I was tired, it was raining hard, and I'm like, oh, I'm not any hurry.
So I'll just bring a list back of all the different funds and all the, even EMS?
That red carpet.
For a parade car.
Yeah, Carrie, she's in the parade, this red carpet.
She's city, we're county, they can have it. Raze. You should have had one in there for Sam Stuxeville.
Okay, well, as far as I know, then we'd be done today. Uh, we can work on salaries first thing on Wednesday and then do capital after that, or we can let capital go till Thursday, we can try to tackle and get it all done Wednesday, but tell me what you.
We can tackle and get it all done Wednesday, let's do it all Wednesday, but.
Okay.
Where I don't have capital, I know Chris asked you to get a couple of things together. Would you got to get it down to eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, is that what the?
That, or you could just decide which ones you want to be reaching now and then the rest of it, because there's always stuff that comes up, so I prefer not to.
That was gonna be my second question, what do we have left if air conditioner goes out that we didn't budget for?
Well, and I think maintenance is requested, I mean, I think you could prioritize, you know, these are the things that we really want to get done, and these are the things that if we have money left at the end of the year, or we, we don't do something else, these are the, I mean.
Well, I think we always prioritize, cause remember, he gave us that bit, that list of, with priorities.
Right, so like the bathroom at Juvenile, you know, do we want to spend the money to have a deep clean to see what that is and then decide whether you want to spend fifty thousand dollars? If you don't spend that fifty thousand dollars, what would be the next priority on your list of things to do? I mean, I think his is a.
His bathrooms are bad. Chris, I looked at Christie's, hers are bad, but I told her, I said, they're not as bad as, as the Pranger Center. Those things are the original.
And did anyone comment?
But it's a bathroom.
Something about the asphalting up there.
What you gonna do in there?
Well, I mean, he got pressed, I got the, the line.
So some of the fixtures and stuff, I understand, but you were saying something about having cleaners come in afterwards, and that, that's not gonna change.
Well, that was Michael's idea, it was just.
I don't think that's gonna change anything. Is he talking about just having them clean the bathroom?
I have cleaned the whole, the whole facility, just, you know, from the construction and the dust.
Well, I will tell you right now, I'm probably not.
He's trying to keep everything out there that, that we've done.
I'm probably not.
And that being.
It's pretty wrong.
Yeah, well, because then you guys would ask me, and I'm like.
Do you dust your own office, or you have somebody, we're gonna hire somebody to clean all our offices?
I just did it for the five years.
I haven't had.
Then I think we should keep it going, just so you guys can see now what we've done.
No, I'll get it dusted on. Dust almost.
Is there any way to, uh, um, take some of that old stuff and either put it kind of at the bottom or put all the new stuff together or something?
I could probably put it all, put a little tick mark there and list it all under there instead of just have it all sold off. If that helps. It's really, I'm surprised, it's not a very long list for being four years out, but we, there is some little stuff in here, you know.
Time to put all our work on.
My biggest question about capital too is, you know, we, we have purchased some of law enforcement buildings, capital out of our sales tax. We've also purchased, you know, Roman Bridge out of our capital, you know, it's just stuff that, um, the M. Of course, that's right. Oh, that, that's other file character. So just keep in mind, you know, we do have those other steps, so I'm, I just really don't know where to draw the line as far as some of the purchases that happen. Out of six fifty versus seven hundred versus seven oh three, seven oh two, or two hundred. But I'll get you the list together on capital, what is it you want on salary personnel? Kind of started with the what positions Kristen added, um, and then what the other requests were. I know you've seen the email I put out about wanting their evaluations at a plant, about two percent. So what else would you like me to do about the personnel? One by one?
What do we say, the one percent raise amounts to each year?
One percent.
One fifty, a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Well, I think the four percent was like four, four hundred and some thousand dollars.
Across all funds?
Yes.
All funds, yes.
So it's a, a little over a hundred thousand for each percent countywide, we agreed.
Plus benefits.
Um, plus benefits? No.
By the time you take that one percent and then you add their, all the stuff, it costs us more than that. So we can either, so I'll have to figure out, are we gonna, what raises are we doing? Offering, what positions are we offering? Here's kind of where I see some of, they need more positions, you can have raises or you can have positions.
That's kind of where I've been in the past, um, you know, I mean.
We're too bad to add, it's important.
I don't.
So really, the departments where we added, we've added this year, so we added a part-timer in, um, one fifty-five, which is the marshal. Um, we added a part-timer in recorder, but he's reimbursing from his fund at the moment.
And wasn't that just something at the end of the year?
And then the two in the sheriff's office that are being paid out of.
But he's bringing it here to offset those.
Right, so three are being offset by income, one's got added last month.
One's being offset by a whole lot of income.
So those, those were the, other than the four positions in the sheriff's office, those were added this year. The only new ones in next year's budget at the moment is the four of the sheriff. The three jailers and the detective. There are no other positions in the budget.
There's others that are asked for.
Currently, there are ones that have.
Prosecutor, public works, health.
Court.
Court.
Yeah.
Was that it? Prosecutor, public works, health, and the court?
EMS.
Did they not ask for it from the get-go, is that why you didn't vote in there?
Um.
EMS is depending on what we do as far as moving forward.
Some of them asked, some of them did not. Assessor and prosecutor did not detail plans, they gave me a lump sum and didn't tell me what they wanted to add, what they didn't. Um, health department, she's kind of going back and forth, she requested two part-timers be made into a full-timer, then she changed her mind and wanted to take one part-timer, make it a full-time, and keep down the part-timer, and then later asked to add an environmental supervisor. The WIC program at the moment is high. She has WIC Medicaid money that she could use to add the additional person, but if you're looking at the program itself, it is not going to be self-funding without WIC Medicaid money. So I'm reluctant to add another person and use WIC Medicaid to pay for it. Recorder needs revenues down overall. He used to be completely self-funding, he used to give money back to the county with his fees. He's now at the point where we're funding almost thirty thousand dollars of his budget overall. I don't see adding another person, it's gonna be a benefit to the county when his fees are down. So the health department, the recorder did request for the budget, I did not include them. Assessor and prosecutor did not include plans or what they wanted, so no, they didn't get any additional.
And then Dale had asked about getting the part-time for.
That one is included, I didn't take Debbie back from the position out when she left.
So it's just a part-time?
No.
That thing was full-time.
It, it's full-time, it was being shared.
What are you gonna ask?
He was doing part-time and you guys were doing part-time.
He was getting reimbursed for half of that position.
Right, so, um, that position is still in there, I did not take it out of the budget.
It's still in his?
Oh, it's in yours.
For what, what, I mean, hardly done, you got half a position for all they're doing?
It was fully in your budget, it was budgeted in one twenty-two completely, it's just Bill was using it half of the time and Billy has with that tax due the best.
Mm-hmm.
So it's all in general fund, it was all in general fund, just to make it cleaner, the one person was coming out of one department in the time of speed.
So what was Christie wanting then? She was wanting one part-time to go full-time, then keep a part-time and then add another full-time for environmental?
Yes, that's where she ended, yes.
So basically, the environmental would cost you about sixty-five thousand with benefits and then your part-timer with WIC costs you about thirty-four thousand with benefits.
Full.
Full-time, but you would get about twenty-five thousand of a reduction, so that full-timer's still gonna cost you a hundred, uh, ten thousand dollars.
For the WIC?
Yes.
I could swallow that a lot easier than I could the environmental one.
Way I understand it, it would reduce that twelve thousand budget in the WIC and also take twelve thousand out of part-time, but in turn, that position would cost you thirty-four or five.
The bad thing is we eliminate the position.
The, the thing to be wary about is, I mean, you're talking about WIC Medicaid, so there's other factors that are gonna play into that as far as the amounts that we're getting reimbursed and things like that, and that was a moving, moving target, so to rely completely on WIC Medicaid to fund a position is a little more scary than actual WIC dollars. I'm gonna pull up the health department.
There, you gotta do?
Yes.
Like you pointed out earlier, Jeff, it's, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help the welfare of the county.
Mm-hmm. I'm trying not to just say no to all of them. That's where I'm at right now, though, I'll tell you that. Right now, I'm letting no for any of them. So I'm trying to try to justify any.
Yeah, we do need to talk about that again, health worker. You guys brought it up.
Yeah, we're gonna save that one for the end.
Zero.
So if you, if you look here, right at the top of the screen, that WIC admin pod, WIC VSPC, you can see that she actually physically has no dollars budgeted in there to spend other than the salaries that are already in the budget. She's relying completely on WIC Medicaid to purchase any of the stuff that they need for the WIC program, plus she wants to use a portion of that money to, um, pay for an additional person. So that's the rate coming in, but your WIC Medicaid is a super lot.
I think she said WIC, but then she had like seventeen hundred clients a month.
They do, they're spending, they're spending over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's what you think.
But when you take all of the salaries for their current employees out of that two hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
That they don't have a lot left over to purchase any of the items that they need to run.
I don't even, I don't know, I'm pushing your sound. You can have, uh, parents that's not married, still makes, is working and going and get WIC stuff. I don't even, I don't know, I'm pushing your sound. You can have, uh, parents that's not married, still makes, is working and going and getting WIC stuff. So the Bible and I would get married, first off, because I'm against marriage, but second off, because they can still get this WIC stuff. So don't get married, you can get more welfare, and you don't have to work back into divorce either, I mean, it's win-win. I should be...
Y'all have a life plan.
I should be there. Come to me, we'll talk about where you skip or not. Don't get it.
No, I just, it's just like...
Your girlfriend doesn't, she doesn't watch our...
Change subject. There's too much pressure. Anytime they say honor and obey, it's just too much pressure. Till death do us part, they say it in the vows, man. Till death do us part, how does that make you feel?
His ex-girlfriend, his ex-girlfriend's got one.
He's got five new dates for the Christmas party.
Sure notice, there's that one. All right. So, well, I mean, I, I'll gather, put it on one sheet, who's requesting what, and what the total dollar amount is, and then you guys will have to make the decisions, and if you still agree with the two percent cost of living and the two percent merit that's currently in the budget...
Am I gonna be the only bad guy on that one?
We're, we're...
We haven't talked anything about that, we've never put that in the budget before, and we always try to keep that out of our general...
The auditors, you put it in there before, in your proposal.
Yeah, Jim always did too.
Yeah.
In the proposal, well, we just took it out when we did ours.
And we have certain people requesting certain amounts more for certain people, so...
In general, my, my thoughts for the past couple of years has been to limit the amount of new FTEs, is to try to reward our employees by giving them a substantial raise, and I think we've made some pretty good progress in the last two years, I think, as far as getting our employee pay up, and so, you know, we, you know, one thing that, the biggest thing that makes us look good is our people. So, um, so, anyway, if you don't have good people, you can look really bad, so... I don't know where you're at on if you're thinking four percent is too much or whatnot, but, uh, anyway, it's, I, if we have it, I think it's, it's a year that we can make it more than normal. I think last year we did both three, one and a half and one and a half, or...
I think it was a two percent cola and then a thousand dollar merit.
So that was almost two percent for some, and if they got the full thousand or a hundred.
One of them got the sheriff that came and presented his, yeah, we had, of course, they did last year, I say they, we did last year, tried to fix some discrepancies that you feel like are out there. So I don't mind going to three percent and then using that merit to try and fix some of it that's out there. I don't know why, the three percent's always kinda been my magic number.
So you're saying you don't really wanna call it a merit pool, you're gonna call it more like an adjustment?
No, I'm fine with calling it a merit pool, I just was saying that I, I like to use that merit pool that makes some of the adjustments where it needs to be made. I don't like paying people just because they've been working for us for ten years and they've entered the whole time. I mean, if you're filling a chair, that's one thing, if you're coming in here and you're filling a chair and finding ways to save us money or provide better service, it's a different thing, so...
Well, in that respect too, and there's probably some people that are filling a chair, I'd say, but as lean as we are with people, I doubt that there's too many people that are just filling a chair, but, uh, or maybe there's, or there probably some, but... Could be on the opposite end too, where we've added positions, added positions, and now we're position-heavy, and now we got a lot of people just filling a chair.
I think we have been conservative when we add people, we haven't added a lot of people in the last few years, and as you know, adding people, um, does really affect your budget going forward. It really does. Capital one-time expenses don't so much, so, I mean, consider there's things here you wanna do versus, you know, one-time capital expense, and we don't have enough in our capital to do that, versus you hire an employee, it's very hard for that position to ever go away going forward.
I favor work for us, we're frugal, we're, we're just very frugal.
And so, maybe we don't wanna jump that far to the other end, I know our reserves are healthy, uh, so, but at any point, that could change too, you know.
I think at some point too, we have to, I mean, if we're not gonna move health, or we're not gonna do some of these things, we've got too many dollars in reserves that we could spend on building needs or whatever that might be.
Well, both of those can be down the road. Both of those can be down the road.
Depends where you wanna count the reserves.
Right, but I mean, a lot of that's coming out of receivership funds.
In, in my mind, part of that receivership fund was part of that two point some million, but, I mean, we can always look at it again, I mean, your contingent fee's at seven hundred.
That's fine, I mean, I wasn't planning on spending too many dollars, but I'm just saying that if we were...
Well, you still have it in there, though. I don't, no, you did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did not.
And that's before we decided we were gonna spend the windows out.
If we needed to, you know, hit, take some more of these big items off of our capital expense, and we've hit a lot of the big ones, I mean, pringer and the windows, um, you know, but there's, there's some others that are there too that need to be addressed.
And I know you guys are considering the next five-year sales tax too, and where you want that money to be earmarked in, as far as you had the presentation by someone, or so that planning group for their portion, and I know you guys have talked about the other fifteen percent, so that can all play into this, because there's always needs here with all these older buildings.
But we have, we have people, and we're gonna have to add space too.
Where I give Kristen the trailer?
We're just gonna put a trailer right back.
We're just gonna find the appropriate.
We'll always find you.
So I don't know, I mean, I think we, we definitely had some discussions on, 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 I mean, I don't know, the sheriff brought that big thing too, but...
Yeah.
And, uh, we're gonna have to...
And we need to plan for that.
He did some of that last year though with the merit money, as I recall. He tried to make some adjustments with the merit money.
There were some big adjustments on there though, from what I saw.
Well, but he made some big adjustments last year, as I, as I recall too.
And, and as far as the capital in that building, I do really think we need to talk about a reserve, and, and capital with, not, capital within law enforcement budget for a building, for that building. When things go wrong over there, it becomes very expensive. I know that building's not that old, but that could come out of that.
We were looking at actually adding that one door instead.
We could, I mean, you can add a line in there for...
Well, they got their own sales tax.
It's the law enforcement fund.
I know, they got their own fund, they got five million come in at minimum on the absentee sales tax, plus two million from general revenue minimum, that's seven million, and that's almost as much as Oshie County's whole budget.
Uh, it is more than their whole budget.
Their budget's eight something, I think. I think, is that how I have to look at it again, but, you know, have it within your means and figure it out somehow.
I mean, I think it comes down to do, buildings are hard, buildings are under your guys' control, where do you draw the line between what's paid by the law enforcement fund and what's not?
Well, Public Works has their fund too, so when they're replacing stuff on their building, does it come out of theirs, or does it come out of capital improvements too?
Well, I mean, and...
Make arguments.
Right, you need to, to figure out where, where the line is. Is it, if it's actually the building, you know, is it you guys, if it's something inside of the building, is it the other fund? You know, we probably should come up with some idea.